At this time. 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 Again, so welcome to the December 9th, 2024 meeting. Again, so welcome to the December 9th, 2024 meeting. Again, so welcome to the December 9th, 2024 meeting. Again, so welcome to the December 9th, 2024 meeting. Again, so welcome to the December 9th, 2024 meeting. At this time, with just like with every meeting, we always start with the invocation. At this time, with, just like with every meeting, we always start with the invocation. At this time, with, just like with every meeting, we always start with the invocation. At this time, with, just like with every meeting, we always start with the invocation. At this time, with, just like with every meeting, we always start with the invocation. We asked that Minister Renee Elder, Covenant Love Church, if she would come to the front. We asked that Minister Renee Elder, Covenant Love Church, if she would come to the front. We asked that Minister Renee Elder, Covenant Love Church, if she would come to the front. We asked that Minister Renee Elder, Covenant Love Church, if she would come to the front. We asked that Minister Renee Elder, Covenant Love Church, if she would come to the front. Ask all would stand. 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 Renee, I think I might let our little secret out. Renee, I think I might let our little secret out. Renee, I think I might let our little secret out. Renee, I think I might let our little secret out. Renee, I think I might let our little secret out. So Renee was ready to pray this morning at 6:30, so I appreciate her. So Renee was ready to pray this morning at 6:30, so I appreciate her. So Renee was ready to pray this morning at 6:30, so I appreciate her. So Renee was ready to pray this morning at 6:30, so I appreciate her. So Renee was ready to pray this morning at 6:30, so I appreciate her. She's been, I said Renee, that's 6:30 PM. 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 You beat me there, so I'll catch you tonight. You beat me there, so I'll catch you tonight. You beat me there, so I'll catch you tonight. You beat me there, so I'll catch you tonight. You beat me there, so I'll catch you tonight. But if you will, please lead us in prayer. But if you will, please lead us in prayer. But if you will, please lead us in prayer. But if you will, please lead us in prayer. But if you will, please lead us in prayer.
Let us all bow our heads with humble hearts and Jesus on our minds. Let us all bow our heads with humble hearts and Jesus on our minds. Let us all bow our heads with humble hearts and Jesus on our minds. Let us all bow our heads with humble hearts and Jesus on our minds. Let us all bow our heads with humble hearts and Jesus on our minds. Oh heavenly Father, as we usher in your spirit into this place, be with us. Oh heavenly Father, as we usher in your spirit into this place, be with us. Oh heavenly Father, as we usher in your spirit into this place, be with us. Oh heavenly Father, as we usher in your spirit into this place, be with us. Oh heavenly Father, as we usher in your spirit into this place, be with us. Ush us into the new year with your peace, your grace, and your mercy. Ush us into the new year with your peace, your grace, and your mercy. Ush us into the new year with your peace, your grace, and your mercy. Ush us into the new year with your peace, your grace, and your mercy. Ush us into the new year with your peace, your grace, and your mercy. We ask Father God for your blessings, your continued blessings. We ask Father God for your blessings, your continued blessings. We ask Father God for your blessings, your continued blessings. We ask Father God for your blessings, your continued blessings. We ask Father God for your blessings, your continued blessings. Read on us, Lord. 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 Fill us with love, fill us with peace, and fill us with your joy. Fill us with love, fill us with peace, and fill us with your joy. Fill us with love, fill us with peace, and fill us with your joy. Fill us with love, fill us with peace, and fill us with your joy. Fill us with love, fill us with peace, and fill us with your joy. It is in Jesus' name that I come before you humbly, graciously, and with a thankful It is in Jesus' name that I come before you humbly, graciously, and with a thankful It is in Jesus' name that I come before you humbly, graciously, and with a thankful It is in Jesus' name that I come before you humbly, graciously, and with a thankful It is in Jesus' name that I come before you humbly, graciously, and with a thankful heart. heart. In Jesus' mighty name, I ask these blessings. heart. 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 In Jesus' mighty name, I ask these blessings. 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 Amen. 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 Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 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 all.
Can't get away that easy. 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 So Renee, we thank you for the prayer. 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 Tell us a little bit, most of us know you, many people know you, talking to the, to Tell us a little bit, most of us know you, many people know you, talking to the, to Tell us a little bit, most of us know you, many people know you, talking to the, to Tell us a little bit, most of us know you, many people know you, talking to the, to the Tell us a little bit, most of us know you, many people know you, talking to the, to the mic face this way, for what's your name? the mic face this way, for what's your name? the mic face this way, for what's your name? the mic face this way, for what's your name? mic face this way, for what's your name? They'll see you on the monitor. 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 There you go. 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 But tell us a little bit about yourself and, and the good work you do for veterans. But tell us a little bit about yourself and, and the good work you do for veterans. But tell us a little bit about yourself and, and the good work you do for veterans. But tell us a little bit about yourself and, and the good work you do for veterans. But tell us a little bit about yourself and, and the good work you do for veterans.
As you know, my name is Renee Elder. 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 I am a native of New York. 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 I came here in 1996 through the military. 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 I retired, me and my husband, and I became homeless after I got out the military. I retired, me and my husband, and I became homeless after I got out the military. I retired, me and my husband, and I became homeless after I got out the military. I retired, me and my husband, and I became homeless after I got out the military. I retired, me and my husband, and I became homeless after I got out the military. And when I became homeless, there was no program here in Fayetteville that could help And when I became homeless, there was no program here in Fayetteville that could help And when I became homeless, there was no program here in Fayetteville that could help And when I became homeless, there was no program here in Fayetteville that could help And when I became homeless, there was no program here in Fayetteville that could help me, so I decided to create my own organization called Veterans Empowering Veterans. me, so I decided to create my own organization called Veterans Empowering Veterans. me, so I decided to create my own organization called Veterans Empowering Veterans. me, so I decided to create my own organization called Veterans Empowering Veterans. me, so I decided to create my own organization called Veterans Empowering Veterans. And my organization did what the organizations here couldn't do for me, which was provide And my organization did what the organizations here couldn't do for me, which was provide And my organization did what the organizations here couldn't do for me, which was provide And my organization did what the organizations here couldn't do for me, which was provide And my organization did what the organizations here couldn't do for me, which was provide adequate housing for the homeless veteran. 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 It provided food, clothing, and a way to find employment. It provided food, clothing, and a way to find employment. It provided food, clothing, and a way to find employment. It provided food, clothing, and a way to find employment. It provided food, clothing, and a way to find employment. And it did, and it still do offer employment. And it did, and it still do offer employment. And it did, and it still do offer employment. And it did, and it still do offer employment. And it did, and it still do offer employment. It pays, how would you say, utility bills? 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 It helps. It helps. It helps. It helps. It helps. And also, my organization do so much from training, and I'm a little nervous, so just And also, my organization do so much from training, and I'm a little nervous, so just And also, my organization do so much from training, and I'm a little nervous, so just And also, my organization do so much from training, and I'm a little nervous, so just And also, my organization do so much from training, and I'm a little nervous, so just forgive me, and again, I apologize. 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 So my organization is a great organization. 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 Many people here, the council members, have known me for years, and they know that my Many people here, the council members, have known me for years, and they know that my Many people here, the council members, have known me for years, and they know that my Many people here, the council members, have known me for years, and they know that my Many people here, the council members, have known me for years, and they know that my program has gotten countless amount of veterans off the street into homes, their own homes. program has gotten countless amount of veterans off the street into homes, their own homes. program has gotten countless amount of veterans off the street into homes, their own homes. program has gotten countless amount of veterans off the street into homes, their own homes. program has gotten countless amount of veterans off the street into homes, their own homes. Currently, we have seven homes and all of them stay occupied. Currently, we have seven homes, and all of them stay occupied. Currently, we have seven homes, and all of them stay occupied. Currently, we have seven homes, and all of them stay occupied. Currently, we have seven homes, and all of them stay occupied. Our program provides a hand up, not a handout. Our program provides a hand up, not a handout. Our program provides a hand up, not a handout. Our program provides a hand up, not a handout. Our program provides a hand up, not a handout. When they move into the housing, they're fully furnished. When they move into the housing, they're fully furnished. When they move into the housing, they're fully furnished. When they move into the housing, they're fully furnished. When they move into the housing, they're fully furnished. We get furniture through different organizations. 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 Of course, Renee go and she plead and she beg and she get what she want. Of course, Renee go and she plead and she beg and she get what she want. Of course, Renee go and she plead and she beg and she get what she want. Of course, Renee go and she plead and she beg and she get what she want. Of course, Renee go and she plead and she beg and she get what she want. So they know me so well now, and when they see me come in, they just be like, open up So they know me so well now, and when they see me come in, they just be like, open up So they know me so well now, and when they see me come in, they just be like, open up So they know me so well now, and when they see me come in, they just be like, open up So they know me so well now, and when they see me come in, they just be like, open up the warehouse, let her go back there and pick what she wants for her veterans. the warehouse, let her go back there and pick what she wants for her veterans. the warehouse, let her go back there and pick what she wants for her veterans. the warehouse, let her go back there and pick what she wants for her veterans. the warehouse, let her go back there and pick what she wants for her veterans. So we have a food pantry. 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 We partnership with Publix, and they give us food on a weekly basis, and we make food We partnership with Publix, and they give us food on a weekly basis, and we make food We partnership with Publix, and they give us food on a weekly basis, and we make food We partnership with Publix, and they give us food on a weekly basis, and we make food We partnership with Publix, and they give us food on a weekly basis, and we make food boxes. 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 To this date, my organization has given out over 9,000 food boxes from 2000, nope, from To this date, my organization has given out over 9,000 food boxes from 2000, nope, from To this date, my organization has given out over 9,000 food boxes from 2000, nope, from To this date, my organization has given out over 9,000 food boxes from 2000, nope, from To this date, my organization has given out over 9,000 food boxes from 2000, nope, from 19, 2008 to the current time. 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 Not only that, but jobs. 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 We've worked with different managers and HRs in Home Depot, Lowe's, Food Lion's, and We've worked with different managers and HRs in Home Depot, Lowe's, Food Lions, and We've worked with different managers and HRs in Home Depot, Lowe's, Food Lions, and We've worked with different managers and HRs in Home Depot, Lowe's, Food Lions, and We've worked with different managers and HRs in Home Depot, Lowe's, Food Lions, and just respective different food restaurants, McDonald's, Taco Bells, and we've gotten just respective different food restaurants, McDonald's, Taco Bells, and we've gotten just respective different food restaurants, McDonald's, Taco Bells, and we've gotten just respective different food restaurants, McDonald's, Taco Bells, and we've gotten just respective different food restaurants, McDonald's, Taco Bells, and we've gotten veterans, homeless veterans, off the street and gotten them employment. veterans, homeless veterans, off the street and gotten them employment. veterans, homeless veterans, off the street and gotten them employment. veterans, homeless veterans, off the street and gotten them employment. veterans, homeless veterans, off the street and gotten them employment. And we also employ them. 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 We, we started lawn care services. We, we've 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 started lawn care services. We have house cleaning services, and I have a venue that I hire the homeless veterans, We have house cleaning services, and I have a venue that I hire the homeless veterans, We have house cleaning services, and I have a venue that I hire the homeless veterans, We have house cleaning services, and I have a venue that I hire the homeless veterans, We have house cleaning services, and I have a venue that I hire the homeless veterans, and we, we pay them as much as we can. and we, we pay them as much as we can. and we, we pay them as much as we can. and we, we pay them as much as we can. and we, we pay them as much as we can. Sometimes I have to turn my pockets, well, my husband's pocket is inside out anyway. Sometimes I have to turn my pockets, well, my husband's pocket is inside out anyway. Sometimes I have to turn my pockets, well, my husband's pocket is inside out anyway. Sometimes I have to turn my pockets, well, my husband's pocket is inside out anyway. Sometimes I have to turn my pockets, well, my husband's pocket is inside out anyway. And we do a good job, I think we do. And we do a good job, I think we do. And we do a good job, I think we do. And we do a good job, I think we do. And we do a good job, I think we do. And we're very independent. 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 We work, as we, we call it hip pocket funds, my pocket to their pockets, my husband's We work, as we, we call it hip pocket funds, my pocket to their pockets, my husband's We work, as we, we call it hip pocket funds, my pocket to their pockets, my husband's We work, as we, we call it hip pocket funds, my pocket to their pockets, my husband's We work, as we, we call it hip pocket funds, my pocket to their pockets, my husband's pockets to my pockets to their pockets. 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 So that's what we call hip pocket funding. 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 We're very independent, so we don't have any outside sources except people who donate. We're very independent, so we don't have any outside sources except people who donate. We're very independent, so we don't have any outside sources except people who donate. We're very independent, so we don't have any outside sources except people who donate. We're very independent, so we don't have any outside sources except people who donate. The mayor is one of our donors. 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 Courtney Banks is one of our donors, and I want to thank you all tonight for donating Courtney Banks is one of our donors, and I want to thank you all tonight for donating Courtney Banks is one of our donors, and I want to thank you all tonight for donating Courtney Banks is one of our donors, and I want to thank you all tonight for donating Courtney Banks is one of our donors, and I want to thank you all tonight for donating to our program. 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 We love you, and we just cherish the, the fact that y'all think enough of us to donate We love you, and we just cherish the, the fact that y'all think enough of us to donate We love you, and we just cherish the, the fact that y'all think enough of us to donate We love you, and we just cherish the, the fact that y'all think enough of us to donate We love you, and we just cherish the, the fact that y'all think enough of us to donate to our, our program. to our, our program. to our, our program. to our, our program. to our, our program.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Give her a round of applause. 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 Yeah, again, thank you. 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 Thank you, Minister Elder. 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 Thank you to your husband for the work that you do for our veterans and for the unsheltered Thank you to your husband for the work that you do for our veterans and for the unsheltered Thank you to your husband for the work that you do for our veterans and for the unsheltered Thank you to your husband for the work that you do for our veterans and for the unsheltered Thank you to your husband for the work that you do for our veterans and for the unsheltered in our communities. 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 Counsel, at this time, we have some announcements, a video presentation, light up Navajo. Counsel, at this time, we have some announcements, a video presentation, light up Navajo. Counsel, at this time, we have some announcements, a video presentation, light up Navajo. Counsel, at this time, we have some announcements, a video presentation, light up Navajo. Counsel, at this time, we have some announcements, a video presentation, light up Navajo. Mr. Hewitt, who's handling that part? 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 Okay. 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 You just told me that too. 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 You just told me that too.
I did, Mr. Mayor. I did, Mr. Mayor. I did, Mr. Mayor. I did, Mr. Mayor. I did, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilmember. 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 And we're joined online by Councilmember McNair, but I'll turn it over to you, Councilman And we're joined online by Councilmember McNair, but I'll turn it over to you, Councilman And we're joined online by Councilmember McNair, but I'll turn it over to you, Councilman And we're joined online by Councilmember McNair, but I'll turn it over to you, Councilman And we're joined online by Councilmember McNair, but I'll turn it over to you, Councilman Thompson. 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 Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 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 Today, we have our PWC Commissioner, Mr. Chris Davis, the Chair, in the audience. Today, we have our PWC Commissioner, Mr. Chris Davis, the Chair, in the audience. Today, we have our PWC Commissioner, Mr. Chris Davis, the Chair, in the audience. Today, we have our PWC Commissioner, Mr. Chris Davis, the Chair, in the audience. Today, we have our PWC Commissioner, Mr. Chris Davis, the Chair, in the audience. We also have the CEO, Mr. Bryant, in the audience. We also have the CEO, Mr. Bryant, in the audience. We also have the CEO, Mr. Bryant, in the audience. We also have the CEO, Mr. Bryant, in the audience. We also have the CEO, Mr. Bryant, in the audience. And I brought them here, and along with the rest of PWC, would y'all please stand so And I brought them here, and along with the rest of PWC, would y'all please stand so And I brought them here, and along with the rest of PWC, would y'all please stand so And I brought them here, and along with the rest of PWC, would y'all please stand so And I brought them here, and along with the rest of PWC, would y'all please stand so everybody can recognize who all the PWC staff is that's in here? everybody can recognize who all the PWC staff is that's in here? everybody can recognize who all the PWC staff is that's in here? everybody can recognize who all the PWC staff is that's in here? everybody can recognize who all the PWC staff is that's in here? They are our utility. 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 I, I, I brought them here because they presented a month ago about a program that was touching, I, I, I brought them here because they presented a month ago about a program that was touching, I, I, I brought them here because they presented a month ago about a program that was touching, I, I, I brought them here because they presented a month ago about a program that was touching, I, I, I brought them here because they presented a month ago about a program that was touching, a program that is generational and changing people lives. a program that is generational and changing people lives. a program that is generational and changing people lives. a program that is generational and changing people lives. a program that is generational and changing people lives. And some things that we take for granted, PWC made sure that those that didn't have And some things that we take for granted, PWC made sure that those that didn't have And some things that we take for granted, PWC made sure that those that didn't have And some things that we take for granted, PWC made sure that those that didn't have And some things that we take for granted, PWC made sure that those that didn't have was provided for, and that is electricity. 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 And this presentation was so touching that I wanted not just council to see it, but I And this presentation was so touching that I wanted not just council to see it, but And this presentation was so touching that I wanted not just council to see it, but And this presentation was so touching that I wanted not just council to see it, but I wanted all our residents across the entire city to see it. I wanted all our residents across the entire city to see it. I wanted all our residents across the entire city to see it. wanted all our residents across the entire city to see it. So if it's available, can someone please roll the tape? So if it's available, can someone please roll the tape? So if it's available, can someone please roll the tape? So if it's available, can someone please roll the tape?
We are looking to pay, but if for some reason that you cannot pay, this young lady will give you a meal.
Don't, don't, don't tell them that. She's in business.
Not only does she do that, I've had the honor of working with her during the month of December, which I will be within a week or so, again, where she gives out all of these bicycles and bags. Her restaurant is filled with toys and bags for those that are less fortunate. Can we give her a round of applause for that, please? Not only that, she also works very closely with our police department. I think it's called Pack a Trunk, is it? Is that it?
It's Faith in Action, but it was Pack a Cruiser.
Pack a Cruiser. I'm going to give her a chance to follow up, but though I have come by her restaurant on many occasions, had some good food, she cooks good, guys. I wanted to just salute her publicly for the city of Fayetteville to know about her in a recognition for dedication, your volunteer services to our community. Your community spirit has helped make our city a better place to live, play, and to recreate. On behalf of our mayor, all of my colleagues, I hope, I don't, hope they don't mind me including them, thank you for what you do. I pray that God will continue to bless you so you can bless others. Is that all right? Let me give you a little hug and you can say a few words. Thank you. Oh, let's turn around. I got somebody gonna take our picture. Here you go. Hold that. This is, go. Come on close. There you go. Y'all get that good. Hold on a minute. Thanks, everybody. Before I go to my seat, Merry Christmas and Merry Christmas on behalf of the city and the mayor, if you don't mind me saying that for you. Merry Christmas, everybody.
I'm in tears. I would like to say thank you. I appreciate it. I've come a very long way. Helping people is all I know, and I've seen a need for the children, mostly in our community, but we do food bags all year for families. We do hygiene bags. I started a Christmas giveaway. We started out with bikes and toys. And this year, we're doing sneakers and toys because I seen a greater need for sneakers versus bikes. So I too do it without, how do I say it? I use my food, my restaurant money to furnish this. I have a lot of great help. God has allowed me to pick. We have 30 people on our group this year that wants to do community work, that, you know, they'll come in and they'll help orchestrate everything. So it's not just me. I have a team of people that has been great, has been helping us put this together, and I'm just so grateful for everybody that's, you know, wants to do community stuff from their heart and not just want to be recognized for something because this is a shock to me. I'm, I'm so grateful. I don't even really know what to say. I'm, 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 I'm in tears. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just thankful. I'm just thankful. If anybody ever want to hop in and don't mind helping the children in this community that has a greater need, then please come by and hop on board. We don't mind the help. Thank you.
And known Erica for a long time. You know, she's got a, we, we call her something else over in the neighborhood. I ain't gonna call her, you know, put her on the spot like that, but I've watched her growth as an entrepreneur from food trucks to doing all of that. But at the end of the day, the give back is amazing. It's not just about you and what you can make, but it's about amount of people you can help and reach. And she's certainly done that. So well-deserved recognition. Thank you, council member here for submitting that. Thank you, Erica, for the good work you're doing. Keep up the good work. And I'll see you in a few weeks for your, for your event. Councilors, we move to the next item. We have a special recognition. I'll go to council member Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Fortunately, our community member wasn't able to attend today, but I think on behalf of council member here, I hope you'll say a few words as well on behalf of the Community Watch President for the Cornbow Neighborhood, Mr. William Grace. He served for several years now and was responsible for making some incredible things happen for his neighborhood, issues with flooding, issues with sidewalks. He really organizes community and I believe is a shining example of what kind of partnership this city needs from its community leaders to organize their neighborhoods. He is stepping down from that role. He was also a member of the Citizens Police Advisory Board and, and served as a member of that board for the city. And for all of his service, we wanted to recognize him with a similar recognition that's already occurred and to give him a city coin, again, in, in great recognition for all the work that he's done for this city and for his neighbors. So to Mr. William Grace, a proud graduate of E. Smith, class of 1992, we hope that at home you can hear that we absolutely appreciate all the work that you've done for us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you too, Mr. Grace, in his absence. So thank you, council member. And with that, I'll move, I will ask Ms. Carolyn Justice Henson if she could meet me at the podium for special recognition for the Fayetteville Christmas Parade.
Brandon Price. Whereas the Fayetteville Rotary Club will hold its 25th Annual Fayetteville Rotary Christmas Parade on December 14, 2024. And whereas in 1999, a member of the Fayetteville Rotary Club learned there would not be a Christmas parade, he approached his and two other Rotary Clubs to continue the tradition. And whereas the parade, the parade is held in the heart of downtown Fayetteville to celebrate the holidays with local marching bands, floats, queens, characters, and other, and others, of course, and of course, Santa. And whereas the Fayetteville Rotary Club's annual Christmas parade was featured in December 2022 edition of Our State Magazine, the parade was also featured as one of the five festival North Carolina Christmas parades. And whereas the club has shown by its actions and good works over the years, that is, it is a significant asset to the community, providing leadership and funding projects that have greatly benefited in the area of its citizens as well as the people around the world. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the City Council and more than 208 citizens, do hereby honorably proclaim the 14th of December in the year 2024 in honor of Fayetteville Rotary Club 25th Annual Christmas Parade. In witness thereof, I hereon do set my hand on the great seal of the City of Fayetteville to be affixed this, well, not this ninth day of December 2024. Mitch Colvin, City of Fayetteville Mayor.
First of all, on behalf of the Fayetteville Rotary Club, both our present and our past members, I'd like to say thank you for this recognition. I'm currently president of the Fayetteville Rotary Club, and it's kind of an easy role when you have great members because all of the members that you see standing here, there's a few, many others in the audience that are all behind this. I would like to recognize Mr. Matt Smith, who is a longtime Rotarian and served as the Chair of the Parade for 17, 18, 20? Oh, 20 years. Yes, since, since we got started. I also have Brandon Price, who is our current Chair. But I would really like to recognize Matt because without him and the Rotarians back in 1999 and their commitment to come together for this community, we wouldn't be standing here today. So if I could, I would like to ask Matt to share a few words.
Thank you. The... Really, we can't say that we haven't had a Curtis Brown and a Bill MacArthur astronaut to the Fayetteville Rotary Christmas Parade. The people that helped get the parade, the parks and wreck, the federal traffic street department, North Carolina Highway, Johnson Chestnut, Johnson, Pam Chan, and the Cumberland County for the Assembly Area in, in there. We greatly...
We appreciate it.
They... We really believe that Brandon Price, he took up this when I had a heart attack. And we thank you.
All right, council member Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me remind everybody that the 25th Anniversary Christmas Parade is this Saturday, right here in downtown Hay Street, from 10 to 2, with a bunch of people that's gonna come. We had a good conversation this morning about getting people to come out. This 25th Anniversary, please come out and support the Rotary Club as they sponsor this year's Christmas Parade. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you all at Rotary Club for the great work that you're doing. Brandon, I don't know if I registered, but I'm gonna crash it, so just look for me on Saturday, but I'll see you there. But thank you all. It's always a great event. Council, moving to the next item, I'm gonna ask Dr. and Mrs. Antonio and Ms. Amika Jones if they could meet me at the podium at this time for recognition for special achievement they've received. I'm sorry. Dr. Antonio Jones and Dr. Amika Jones. I'm sorry. I needed to put the handle on, on both. I was corrected, so no disrespecting. So oftentimes in our community, when we have some extraordinary achievement by our citizens, we like to highlight that. You know, we hear oftentimes a lot of the negative stories about people in our community, but we want to make sure, and the council is very intentional about giving time in the beginning of every meeting to acknowledge people who are doing great things every day in this community. And the Joneses have received some very special awards. They have so many, I told them I didn't have room for all of this, but they have really been acknowledged and have shown years of dedicated service and work for humanity in our community. And so I will read, they both have received the President's Lifetime Achievement Award, signed by President Biden. And so I want to, want to read that and to officially present that to you as the mayor and the City Council, as a token of acknowledgement for the great work that you've done and this community has benefited for. And this correspondent letter came from the White House, from the Office of the White House, and it reads as follows, "The American story depends not on any one of us, not on some of us, but on all of us. I congratulate you two on taking it upon yourself to contribute to public good, and I'm proud to present you with the President's Lifetime Achievement Award in recognition of your 5,000 hours of service to this great nation. Throughout our country's history, the American story has been strengthened by those who combine an optimism about what can be with the resilience to turn it into vision, that vision into reality. I know that I am not alone in recognizing that those who are willing to step up and to volunteer in service of community and country are essential to the ongoing work of forming a more perfect union. By sharing your time and passion, you are helping, helping discover and deliver solutions to the challenges we face, solutions that we need now more than ever. We are living in a moment that calls for hope and light and love. Hope for our future, light to see our way forward, and love for one another. Through your service, you are providing all three. On behalf of the American people, and in this case, the City of Fayetteville, and the 208,000 citizens that we represent, we join President Biden. It says, I extend heartfelt appreciation for you, for your volunteer leadership, and encourage you to continue to answer the call of service. The country is counting on you. Signed by Joseph R. Biden."
Mr. Mayor, it is truly an honor and to the esteemed bench to receive such recognition. The can-do model is already etched in scripture, and we integrate that wholeheartedly in what we do for the citizens of Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm at a loss of words, but I just want to say thank you so much for this. I'm gonna let him speak. This is his area.
Well, I first thank God. First of all, if you know me, that's, that's me. I don't shy away from it. I thank God for just having the opportunity to be here. And this is even more special for me. My family and I, my mother had to have a procedure. We were just leaving the hospital and she, she came out of surgery fine, so I thank God for that. So this, wow. So this is like icing on the cake for us. We've, and I'll make this short. I know I'm a minister and somebody's like, yeah, I heard that before. But, but in all seriousness, we've, we've, my wife and I have been together over 25 years, and we've been serving in this community in different capacities for just that long. And I liken it unto Christ. You'll get me in the car when I say this, but I often hear people say, well, I hadn't heard of you. I hadn't heard of you. And I said, well, you really don't know everybody. And number two, the way that we do things, I liken it unto Christ, where he did many things. He healed, and he, he did, just did a lot of things. But one thing he often said was, "Do not tell them my name." Just, just, don't tell them my name. Just go and tell them about what's done so they would encourage other people. And we adapted that for ourselves, where we, we, we don't do things for recognition. We do things simply because it's the right thing to do. We have the capacity to do that, and it's just in our heart to do that. So whether it's working with, with organizations such as mothers with children behind bars with, which helps support, is a support system for individuals, not just mothers, but fathers that may have individuals that are incarcerated, young people, and even working with their siblings to make sure that they don't follow that path, whether it's helping individuals in, with their junior and senior prom and, and, and funding their outfits and even dressing up as chauffeurs and going to get them. Just so many different things we do, including, I have to mention this because it's typically a marginalized community, even work with those affected and affected by HIV/AIDS. And it's just so much that God has blessed us to do. And I just, I'm at a loss of words as well, but I know that God has a lot for me to do, for us to do. And to be able to do that with a spouse, I can tell you, that is priceless. So I want to tell her publicly, I love you. Thank you so much. Even for the time that I, I served on council, you supported me because there's no way in, I know you walk in a test, it, it takes family, and if family is not behind you, you can't do it. So thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much just for your support. Also, I, I told council member Benevente beforehand, he did something for me. He did a ki, a very kind gesture during the open house of the Senior Center East, which I was blessed to be a part of, to actually get that to fruition. But he extended something for me, and I told him, I know, he said, don't do, I said, I'm gonna do it openly, just to let him know I appreciate that because there, there is no hate. I, I want him, he knows that, but I want to publicly say, we, we appreciate, we don't love, I mean, we don't hate, we love, and that's the only way we're able to do, do things. So thank you so much. And again, to my family, thank you so much. I'm, I come from a large family of 12. I'm number 10 out of, out of that. And so just to have family to support, to, to do things like this, it's, it's, it's very humbling. And again, I don't do it for recognition. And as my father once told me, when, when, when it comes, you have to humble even yourself and say, you know what? I give God the glory for it, but I also thank God because it takes our obedience to do that. So I want to say thank you. If I can use the last 20 seconds of this to say something to my wife, and I want to, it's a 20-second segment of a song, but it's applicable even to you all as council, those of you that are serving in different capacities, just because it is, it's a wonderful thing when you are actually chosen to serve. It's not anything any of us should take for granted. So if you would give me 20 seconds just to do that. It's a wonderful thing to be chosen by God. It's a wonderful thing to be chosen to serve. So don't ever complain when he calls your name. The way may get hard, but there's a special reward when you're chosen by God. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
Yeah, I think that's, that's part of this. No, I think, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and there were, there were a number of awards, you know, again, that they had received from flags over the Capitol, over the General Assembly in Raleigh to other community recognition. So thank you all. 5,000 hours or more is a lot. If you think about 24 hours in a day, that's a lot of volunteer service that you loan to helping better the lives of a community and other people. So thank you, Dr. and Dr. Jones, for your recognition. Counsel, at this time, we do have another special presentation, and I will turn that over to my colleague, the PWC Liaison, council member Derek Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you don't mind, you can go down, Mr. Mayor, get in position. I'd like to call Mr. Nick Nollet to the front, please. I know it's a surprise. That's why I wanted the mayor to go down and surprise you. I didn't want to prolong this. I know you've been waiting patiently. Let me just say from some of the words that I have heard previously at the PWC meetings, is that life started around water. Cities would always go to places where they had water so they can start building. In order for a city to expand, you have to have water. There is no life without water. I don't care where you go. We just saw earlier about the Navajo project where they had life, but they didn't have electricity. But now we're going to talk about life with water. Mr. Nick, I just want you to know that on behalf of myself and the City of Fayetteville, we appreciate everything that you have done. Mr. Nick is retiring at the end of December, and I didn't want him to leave without us recognizing him for the 41 years of service that he's provided to this community. So I'm gonna read a few points for you. Mr. Mick Nollet, Nolan, I'm sorry, joined PWC as the Chief Operation Officer for Water Resources in 1993. Before joining PWC, Mr. Mick, 17 years, he was served as 17 years as a Regional Supervisor for Environmental Management Commission, which is now DEQ, which is North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. Mick has worked hard for residents for the Greater Philadelphia Region and Cape Fear River Basin for over 48 years of dedicated service. Forty-eight years of dedicated service. One of his most notable achievements include leading a comprehensive water quality monitoring program that has significantly enhanced the reliability and safety of our local water resources. Recognizing the importance of staying ahead of the industry trends and regulation requirements, Mick spearheaded several initiatives to modernize Fayetteville's water treatment facilities. PWC was the first in the state to receive the Partnership for Safe Drinking Water Director's Award and is on track to receive it for the 25th year in a row. PWC was also awarded the Gold Award for Exceptional Utility Performance by the Association of Metropolitan Water Agencies, which recognizes water systems that exhibit high levels of customer satisfaction and water quality earlier this year. Thanks to Mick's leadership and example, PWC has always emerged stronger and better equipped to serve the people of Fayetteville and the surrounding communities. Mick's commitment to providing safe, reliable, and affordable water and wastewater services is second to none. Mick also participates actively in several professional civic organizations, and I'm just gonna name a few. Urban Water Constorium, North Carolina Drinking Water Committee, Cape Fear River Assembly, Jordan Lake Stakeholders Advisory Board, Jack Britt International Integrated Systems, Fayetteville Tech Community College's New Water Line Utility Class, and much more. Beyond his professional achievements, Mick Nolan is a professional person of exceptional character and integrity. He is widely respected by his colleagues, peers, and community members, and honestly, with honesty, humility, and unwavering commitment to doing the right thing always. Mick's retirement marks the end of an era for the City of Fayetteville and the Public Works Commission, but his influence will undoubtedly continue to be felt for years to come. Mick, I want to thank you and your family for the four decades of committed service to not only PWC, the Cape Fear River Basin, but the City of Fayetteville. Thank you, sir. Can your wife come up?
Yeah, she's here.
Ms. Nolan, would you like to come up with Mick, please? Can you say a few words?
Well, I'm certainly very appreciative and feel humbled to, to be recognized like this. Little did I know that when I went off to NC State in 1972, that I would end up coming here and, and spending my career beside the Cape Fear River, you know, keeping an eye on things, both from a regulatory point of view when I was with the, the Regional Office with DEQ, but then the last 41, 31 years with PWC as the Chief Officer. One thing that I'm, and I appreciate what you, you've had to say about thanking the wives and the families because they are part of the deal. Because when the hurricane starts rolling in, guess who leaves home? And the fort is now having to be manned by your, by your better half. And so I, I certainly appreciate all the support and the, you know, we've had issues with inter-basin transfer, one for dioxane, PFS and PFOA, and the, all, a lot of other emerging contaminants, and we really need to keep an eye, and I have tried to do that, keep an eye on what's going on upstream of us, because if, if we don't keep an eye on that and, and advocate for ourselves, and we, and we'll find ourselves coming up short in the future. But, but, but water is, is very important, and all you have to do is, is look at...
But water is very important, and all you have to do is look at what one of the key ingredients is for somebody coming somewhere. Can you, you know, you have to be able to supply the electricity and wastewater and the job force and that kind of thing, workforce. But if you don't have the water, they're going to go somewhere else. And so we're trying to make sure that the prosperity that Fayetteville has enjoyed in the decades that we've been here in Fayetteville and raised our family, and Fayetteville has been good to us, and all the relationships over the years between the councilmen that are now commissioners, and the commissioners that are now councilmen, and the mayors, and all the other city council, and especially working with Doug and his staff. But we faced a lot of challenges, and we figured it out. A lot of times, there's not an easy solution. But I certainly do want to close by saying, you know, you can't achieve any kind of recognition unless you've got people that work with you and are part of the solution. I always like to say, it's amazing what you can do when you don't worry about who gets the credit, right? So thank you very much. And I do have to say, I feel honored to be in the presence of some of these other folks that have been recognized for some really, you know, very worthwhile things that are so important to our community and to our future. So it's great to hear all this good news about Fayetteville. So again, thank you very much. It's been a great run, and we'll be fine down there. We'll be fine.
Thank you.
I want to get a picture with all the council with Mick.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Chris, Mr. Bryant, PWC staff, Ms. Nolan.
She volunteered to come, she did.
Your PWC staff, too. Look at me. One, two.
All right. Yep. Well, thank you, Councilman Thompson. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Nolan. Forty-one years, you almost got DJ beat up here. So we appreciate you. Appreciate you. All right. All right, so, you know, look, again, you have to give people their flowers while they live in. And it's good to talk about people and their legacy after they pass, but they need to do it while they can hear it. So we appreciate your patience as we acknowledge the great things and great people who've done and continue to do wonderful work in this community. Again, we're certainly proud of you and appreciative of all of what you've done. But counsel, as we move, we've got a few more announcements, then we'll move, I'll go to Councilmember Bank McLaughlin-Davis and Mayor Pro Tim, and then we'll move to the next item, I think. That'll be it. You're good? All right. Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know and remind folks that Fayetteville Next is having their ugly Christmas sweater next Saturday at the Woodpecker Stadium. Tickets are loaned at the Chambers website, so make sure you check out Fayetteville Next and enjoy their ugly sweater party.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So before we, this will be our last time that we meet before Christmas, and once a football mom, always a football mom. So I want to give a shout out to District Seven, District Eight, I'm sorry, 71st High School, they are going to, is it Seven? I'm sorry, District Seven, they are going to the state playoffs. They have two more, one more game to get to the state playoffs. And one of the reasons I really wanted to bring this out to everybody, last year, they went to the state playoffs. And this council and the councils before us have worked very hard for our children to be proud to be part of Fayetteville. And one of the best things that I have ever seen sitting on this diocese is when they were running through the gold post, they held the Fayetteville flag. They were very proud to be part of this city. So let's show them how proud we are of them, that they are going up, I think this is the last round, and I know they're going to win, so let's watch and cheer them on. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Good luck to the 71st Falcons and all of the support staff that are making them represent us so well. All right, with that, I'll move to Councilmember here.
Yes, yes, Mayor, and forgive me for not announcing it early, but in the spirit of Christmas and giving, Kingdom Impact Global Ministries Bread of Life Ministry will be having another Christmas, Christmas Annual Food Drive, as I announced last month for Thanksgiving. They are also doing it for Christmas, December the 20th, at 2503 Murkison Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Please, please get there early, get in line early. It begins at nine o'clock, so get there early, and get you some very nice Christmas goods to enjoy a very nice Christmas dinner with your family. That's on December the 20th, beginning at 9:00 a.m., but I say get there at 7:00, at Kingdom Impact Global Ministries, 2503 Murkison Road. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman here. All right, so with that, we've covered our announcements and recognition. I'll move to the City Manager's report. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Good evening. Simple announcement tonight, we have a, we're working, as you know, on a pedestrian plan, and we're inviting all citizens, community members, to do a drop-in with us Thursday, December 12th, at the Fast Transit Center. We have two times. One is in the morning, starting at 11:30 a.m., and finishes about 1:00 p.m. And then we also have a second session between 4:30 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. as well. We hope to be able to utilize the input from the community members at this time to help us develop the draft list of projects and prioritizations that will come to council a little bit later. If you're unable to attend either of the meetings or would like more information about the pedestrian plan, you can go to the city's webpage, which is FayettevilleNC.gov/walkingsafe, or you can always sign up for the City Manager's newsletter and get the latest information about this and other events, and that also is available on the city's website. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Council 6.0 is the approval of the agenda. We can go to our shore system, and I'll go to, as I call the votes, I'll call for Councilmember McNair, who's joining us by phone. All right, I have a motion to approve by Councilmember Harris, seconded by Councilmember Hondros. Any discussion on the motion to approve? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember McNair, your vote to approve the agenda?
Yes, sir, that is green, sir. Thank you.
Green, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous, so the agenda is approved. Moving now to 7.0 is the public forum. Per city council policy, 120-9, this is a time that residents may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. The public forum lasts no longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes each to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. No time will be yielded to any other speaker by another speaker. Individuals designed to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk no later than 5:00 p.m. on today. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. When the light on the podium changes from green to yellow, it means you have 30 seconds remaining, and when the light changes to red, that means your time has expired. Any remaining speakers of the public forum list that did not have an opportunity to address the council within the timeframe, we have an option to have their name placed at the beginning of the next scheduled public forum list of speakers. With that, Madam Clerk, if you could call the first speaker.
Yes, ma'am, we have eight speakers signed up for this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Kathy Greggs.
Good evening, Ms. Greggs, how are you?
How are you, Mayor Kovan? How you doing, city council members?
Good.
I want to first say that we do appreciate Chief Braden taking his time out last week to have a discussion on Driving While Black with my nonprofit organization. I'm CEO of Fayetteville Police Accountability Community Task Force here in Fayetteville, and we're actually about to celebrate our 10-year anniversary in 2025. And it's ironic that we actually started from former council member Chris Davis under Community Impact many years ago. So we just want to make sure we emphasize some things when it came to Driving While Black. Before we had a discussion, Fayetteville PAC went to North Carolina ACLU, North Carolina Justice Center, as well as the Governor Cooper's Task Force, racial equity, which you said on, Mayor Kovan. We had to verify that we did imply a CPOA with a civilian police oversight for all North Carolina municipalities. That recommendation is in 1213, 2020, the Governor Cooper's Task Force, you can look it up, is number 36. And I say this because we have emphasized this ever since we started, since 2015, as Fayetteville PAC here in the City of Fayetteville. We also have went international. We represented different countries as well, that I have sat on the UN, United Nations, as well as the Diplomatic Committee, on discussing how Fayetteville is able to achieve with the new chief of Braden, with less employees, but still able to decrease the crime rate. So I want to give him kudos to that. So the initiative that we have given was given to Sweden, Norway, Interpol, as well as UAE from me in presentation. I did invite Marjorie McLean from the Fayetteville Area Section of the United Negro Women Council. But I just want to make sure, before she speaks, that we make sure that we don't get misreputation, that Fayetteville PAC has initiated this. This also was passed in August 2020 and sent to the General Assembly by you, Mayor Kovan, as well as former council member and Senator Kurt DeViere, we wrote Senate Bill 682. So we think that an independent oversight of the police will assist with Driving While Black, as well as a Tier 1 poverty, which we are still in since 2012, not only the city, but the county. So poverty pays a huge part in this, but data-driven information must be correct, because the data is manipulated for Driving While Black. And I'll have you soon.
Good evening. My name is Marjorie McLean. I am the president of the Fayetteville Area Section of the National Council of Negro Women, and I also would like to thank Ms. Kathy Greggs and Chief Braden for allowing us to come.
Real quickly, Ms. Marjorie, I'm sorry, during the public forum, Ms. Greggs' technicality there, trying to keep me legal. So did you sign up with the city clerk as well?
Yeah, I just came with her.
It did.
Yeah, she was just with me.
So because I made the rule about yielding time is the only reason, but I think, you know, we definitely want to encourage you to come back. Ms. Greggs, you still have some remaining time, if you want to kind of say what, you know, just introduce her.
Well, we just wanted to emphasize the poverty issue is while also with Driving While Black. And we noticed that there is a specific council person discussing this issue, but that issue in that district is the highest poverty problem in Fayetteville, in District Three. So, okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Nice to meet you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Ms. Angela Bass. Ms. Angela Bass. Our next speaker is Ms. Angela Holden.
Good afternoon. How y'all doing?
How you doing?
So I came to talk about the mold situation that we got going on over in the Fayetteville Housing Authority of Holland Homes. On several occasion, we have called in, it's something going on within the building. They telling us it's not mold, but yet we come back home, and the mold is on the counter, underneath everything, you still got to keep wiping stuff down. It's on the property, I mean, it's not one kind of mold, it's black mold, it's green mold, it's yellow mold, and we're getting sick in there, but they telling us it's not the mold. Something is making us sick in there. My neighbor is now on oxygen, and the problems that's going on around right now is that once we, this situation started, we kept complaining, but all of a sudden now, we got paperwork missing out of our homes from documents that we submitted, from doctor reports, from talking to the health department, not calling back. But then I recently found out I got hacked, because everything I was bringing for y'all, now all my emails are missing. Other tenants are complaining about stuff is missing also, that they feel like someone's been in their home as far as their documents and stuff, what we had reported prior to moving in, damages that was supposed to be done and wasn't done, AC units turning completely black, when they said there was no mold in the wall, but we saw it for ourselves. Like I said, I had all the pictures and stuff, so I know I do want to come back to make sure I can be able to present if we can get all my evidence back, because like I said, I've been hacked. But I've been here since 2013. I've been volunteering for everything that I can volunteer for, you know, whether it's people say there's nothing to do in Fayetteville, I'll find something for them to do, to the point of working with the kids and the seniors whenever they need somebody to help them. But this has gotten to the point where I can't do it by myself, because now I feel like I've been helping some of the military spouses that lost their benefits due to negligence of stuff that happened in the courts as far as false documents and stuff. But again, you need someone else that knows the law to be able to help them get their benefits back. I also was one of those people not understanding that becoming here to help others, I became someone now that I feel like I'm the one that needs help, because I don't know who to talk to about the situations that's going on, and I don't want nobody getting more hurt than they already are over where we live in.
Thank you so much, and we have your address. So, Mr. Manager, can you have some code enforcement?
I've called code enforcement, everybody, but I, like I said, I don't know if all my emails, I even emailed you, but I don't know if they all went out, because like I said, I was being hacked. And as I was being hacked, some of the emails went out, some didn't, pictures were disappearing, or to say that the file is too big, when I done sent that same file several times. But again, it's been a lot.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for coming to talk to us, Mr. Hewitt.
Yes, sir, Mayor, members of council. For all of the speakers who are on your list, we attempt to call them the day of, and ma'am, we think we left a message for you, but we will return, give you a call again tomorrow.
Okay. Again, my phone and everything is hacked, so send an email too, because I did finally get a message back from her today and yesterday.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Ms. Peggy Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor Kovan and council members. My name is Peggy Thompson. I live at 516 Bravery Lane here in Fayetteville. I'm here to address the mental health and homeless issues. Once again, I was here previously in September. I, I'm going to speak on, based on personal experiences, the things that I have witnessed throughout the area, and the most recent experience with my son. I have been homeless before, quite a few times, as a child and as an adult. I've slept in a car, I know how it is to be homeless, whether I was fleeing a DB situation or refusing to stay in unsafe homes. I see unsheltered individuals daily, lounging, walking, and pumping up their air mattresses. Some choose to be there, that's their choice. How many individuals suffer from mental health illnesses that are on probation or intellectually challenged and more, but never get the right or proper and consistent help before being thrown into the streets? They should be learning how to navigate and survive in this cold world alone. They should be in spaces, learning life and coping skills. If anyone has ever dealt with depression, that falls on or in the category of mental illness. Most teens celebrate, most teens who celebrate their 18th birthday are having birthday parties, going to colleges, or doing something positive. My son ended up being 18 and homeless. We have been battling some things for two years now. I'm gonna skip that part, because my time is leaving. One morning after, one morning after 1:00 a.m., I found my son on my back patio, sleeping in temperatures below freezing. He had been kicked out the shelter that the His probation officer assigned him to. He has very limited resources and have not had anything to meet his needs. I have two younger kids. I have to speak to them and let them know why their brother cannot stay with them. After doing research and being in this situation, I have found out that men don't have as many options available as females or mothers with children. I've also found out that during the holidays, the shelters that are available for the unshelter closes for a few days. They really don't have a place to go on the weekends besides the libraries or during the shelter's operating hours. They roam around, prop up near businesses, or hang out in plain sight. What happens to the unshelter if they constantly get kicked out? Where do they go besides streets or jail? I think the homeless shelter being imposed for 2027 is an amazing idea, but the timeframe for this facility is too far out, as the homeless population seems to be increasing. The place doesn't have to be immaculate, but a temporary shelter and safety. They need, they need help, some a little more than others, and the right resources. Thank you, Mayor, and council members for your time, and allow me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. And make sure, Ms. Thompson, as the shelter, you know, I typically don't give commentary after this, but the county commissioners need to hear exactly what you said. They've got a new group over there, but... They've got a new group over there, but they do need to hear that. Thank you for bringing that to us. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Our next speaker is Ms. Angela Tatum.
Good evening, Ms. Angela.
How are you? I hope everyone had a peaceful holiday. I'm excited to finally see that the Office of Community Safety is getting its final spot under the city manager's budget so that the city can begin to get this office up and running. As we all prepare to see this office built, there are a few things that we would like to remind the city manager to consider. One would be to express, to hold town hall meetings for our community members, to allow them to express their interest in following the development, and to also allow community members to meet the candidates that apply for this position. It would also be nice to have the city manager explain how the $2.3 million will be allocated. We know that $2,96,000 is for OCS with an additional $204,000 that covers salaries and additional items. Providing a breakdown like what was done during the budget proposal would also be helpful. It would also be nice to have the city manager to share with the public the thought process behind diverting from one director of OCS position into two positions, the community impact supervisor and the community safety program manager. Our group looks forward to engaging throughout this process to help keep the community informed and engaged. Remember, as we look to build out this office, we need to keep all pillars intact to ensure that the Office of Community Safety is set up for success and not failure. This includes independent oversight, along with mental health response, violence interruption, and the unhoused response. As we continue the conversation around OCS, there are some of, there are some on our city council who want people to believe that when we consistently advocate for the community by wanting our police department to be accountable for their actions, that this is an act of creating animosity between the Fayetteville Police Department and the communities that they are sworn to protect and serve. That narrative couldn't be farthest from the truth, and it's dangerous to send out this message. It creates an environment of silencing those fighting for marginalized communities, and it makes it seem as if our police chief and the department are not interested in hearing from the community, and I hope that is not the case. We should not have our elected officials polarize these issues that need to be addressed, but instead foster a bridge of communication between everyone who has a goal for a safer city for all of our citizens. I'm hoping that the police chief and the police department are not influenced by this rhetoric and welcomes voices from the community members. Fayetteville Freedom for All, along with everyone agrees that poverty is the root issue for black drivers being disproportionately policed. We have consistently worked with District Three council member to address this as we encourage others to join in to make sure that even people without money receive equal justice. Let's remember to not silence our community with the reception, that if you advocate for yourself, you will be negatively viewed by selected members. Let's do better to foster the necessary conversations to get the change we deserve. I also look forward to beginning the process to work with the city to get the Fayetteville designated as a baby-friendly city. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Ms. Lizette Rodriguez, and I do apologize, I called your name out of sequence.
Good evening, Ms. Rodriguez.
Hello, everybody. As you guys might have seen, the public has finally released, has finally received the autopsy for Lawrence Ortiz, who died in police custody more than a year ago. And while his death was ruled a suicide, there are still unanswered questions about how a man who was searched by police and after a gun was found was then handcuffed behind his back and was somehow able to reach a second gun that wasn't found in his front pocket and was allegedly able to shoot himself in the head. As a recent article in City View points out, there are multiple inconsistencies and missing details in both the initial police report and what was reported in the autopsy. And other than initial reporting when the incidents occurred, the public still hasn't really received any additional details about the police internal investigation or its findings. And it's hard not to compare and contrast the transparency the public received regarding the canine incident earlier this year to the loss of human life. After the canine incident and due to public outcry, the FPD released a two-page document detailing what happened, the steps it took to reviewing the incident, and they stated it was reviewed by three master handlers, reviewed by legal counsel, the canine records were reviewed. It went into details about how many recordings of the incident there were. There was an independent witness present, and the list goes on. And that type of transparency is what the department should always have in cases of police, alleged police misconduct, and in the case of Mr. Ortiz, a death in police custody. This council has an opportunity to be bold and implement policy that addresses a chronically problematic lack of transparency and accountability following police homicides and deaths of residents in police custody. In the wake of this tragedy and many others, we urge this council to release a sentinel event review. In 2022, Governor-elect Josh Stein recommended that a SCR be completed and released following the police homicide of Jada Johnson. And this past July, this council voted in favor of establishing that, but it has never been used. And this seems to be a common pattern because in October 2023, the council passed a motion to petition the court to release the body cam footage of Mr. Ortiz. And as City View reported, there has been no evidence that the city actually followed through with this motion. In addition to including independent police oversight under the new Office of Community Safety, we also urge this council to develop and implement a policy that makes a sentinel event review mandatory anytime a citizen dies or is seriously injured while in FPD custody. The lives of our citizens, especially the most marginalized ones, depend on it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Chilenko Hurst. Not here. Our final speaker is Mr. Jose Cardona.
Mr. Cardona, long time no see.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, how you all doing? My name is Josei Cardona. I live at 233 Addison Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I am the truth, the way, and the light today in this place. I saw a couple of angels, but I also see a couple of devils among us. Today, Mr.
Got to be nice now.
Yes, excuse me, got to be nice. Sorry. Today, I come to talk to you about the white flag and the red flag that you guys are having problems or not you guys, Cumberland County, because you guys do not take part in this whatsoever, and neither do you take part in the children of this community through the education system. I have, I have three suggestions for you today to help the homeless, to help those individuals that need to get away from the cold and the freezing rain. Suggestion number one, can you please extend the buses' hours of operation? Don't stop them at 7:00, have them work all night long. That would give a shelter to a person who's in need of freezing to death. If you don't like that option, how about 10 buses? Maybe put them somewhere where the people who need it most would be in that area. They could get in the bus. It's not going to be driving around, it's just going to be stable. You have 30 buses and 21 fast-track vans capable of holding many people. Get them out of the cold, that's all. You don't have to feed them, get them close to a bathroom, okay? We have two bathrooms across the street from the Airborne Ops Museum. Guess what? They locked at night, they're locked in the daytime. So if you're not there, you got to go to the bathroom, you got to go to the woods. Cumberland County Commissioners are working in the homeless problem, but they're taking a sweet time. First, they have to make a comfort center, okay, at the cost of billions of dollars, and they also have to be a Confederate museum that's probably in your schedule tonight. So tonight, I put my brown boots on, okay, just in case it gets too deep in here.
All right, you'll be nice, right?
Be nice, be nice. And let you know that the solutions to our problem is not putting money from nonprofit groups to nonprofit groups, and they give it to another profit group, and they pass it on along, like the Cumberland County Foundation. Stop giving people to these people. Please give to operation in this much. They do more for this city and feed more people in this town, and they have done it for the past, who knows, 20 years? I thank you for having me.
All right. Thank you.
We have no further speakers.
All right. Well, thank all our speakers tonight who've spoken. And council, we will move to 8.0, the consent part of the agenda, and I'll entertain a motion from this area. Councilmember Banks, I'm sorry, wait a minute. Councilmember Hare.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I, well, are we moving to?
So this would be to approve unless you have an item?
Yeah, I was moving to approve because I decided not to pull that item.
Okay, all right. That's all, Councilmember Benevente and Banks-McLaughlin, did you revert, did you take? Okay. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we remove item number 8.084 from the consent agenda for an up or down vote.
Okay, all right. And other than that, is that a motion to approve with the exception of that one?
Yes, sir.
All right. It's a motion to approve by Councilmember Benevente with the exception of 8.04 for up or down vote. Second about Councilmember Hondros, discussion on the motion? You said discussion, sir?
No, none of this.
Okay, all right. We'll look to you for action. Councilmember McNair.
That is green, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, moving to 8.084. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Manager Hewitt, you explained this to us in our dinner meeting, but could you offer an explanation of exactly what is being accomplished with this particular item?
Yes, sir. This is a budget action which allows us to expense the $2.3 million that the council set aside for the Office of Community Safety. Specifically, we plan to move forward, we hope, with hiring two additional people to, as Angela is still here, Tatum mentioned. We also are looking to explore partnerships, maybe through contracts, to also address the city council's desire for an alternative or response. And we've had some very fruitful conversations with service providers who may be able to assist us if we have someone who needs more mental health assistance than they do police assistance. It's my hope that we will be able to bring some of these staff members onboard and be able to report back to council and the community in early January, probably February, probably a more reasonable timeframe. But this just essentially moves the money from, and puts it in place where we can spend it so that we can actually expense a portion of the budget.
Thank you, City Manager Hewitt. Mr. Mayor, I just moved that we approve this item, and I just have a moment of discussion after we, if this, if this motion is seconded.
All right, let's see. I think we still have our, Jennifer Zapp from the previous motion. Didn't we vote on that already? To approve?
Why not?
So this is specifically for 8.04. All right, this is a motion by Councilmember Benevente. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second about Councilmember Hare. Any discuss, and discussion? Councilmember Benevente, you say you had a discussion? Again?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is my first round of discussion. I think I just had a question earlier. I just want to take this time to thank my colleagues for their support in making this a priority during our strategic planning meeting in January earlier this year, and then funding the start of this new office during our fiscal year '25 budget this past summer. I also want to thank those grassroots community organizers that made tremendous efforts to educate our community on exactly what this office will do to serve their public safety needs. The Office of Community Safety will work to answer many of the struggles that we must contend with on the path to comprehensive and sustainable public safety. I believe FPD leadership through our chief of police has made it clear to council and the community that they welcome additional support to address three key root issues: those related to abject poverty, those for folk, those folks experiencing mental health crisis, and issues related to substance abuse and addiction. Right now, we often have to wait until someone has been harmed or a law's been broken before we can address these issues once they become an emergency. Thankfully, there's another way. Developing an office that will serve as the hub for alternative response to appropriate 911 calls, let's be honest, was at one point labeled as an anti-police effort. However, as we look to address issues with our 80-plus vacancies within the police department, one of the challenges is that many of our police officers are experiencing a level of burnout. We can set up our new recruits for success when we permit them to focus on what they were trained to do. We set police up for failure when we overburden them, and then should a headline-grabbing incident occur, we tend not to notice a dozen separate instances when effective intervention failed to come to fruition. So I believe this is a very pivotal moment in our city's history when we're going to move towards a new way of doing business, and I believe that this Office of Community Safety is going to be something that starts very, very, very directly in certain areas, but will grow to something that is available to all citizens throughout the entire city. So again, I just thank my colleagues, I thank the community members for this opportunity. We've got a long way to go, but this is a very, very good start. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Benevente. So council, we've had discussion on 8.084. It's a motion by Councilmember Benevente, seconded by Councilmember Hare. All right, council, look to you for action. All right, Councilmember McNair.
That is green, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, motion carries unanimous for those voting. All right, council, moving to the reports from boards and commissions. 9.01, Historic Resource Commission 2024 Report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Introduce Will Deaton, Planning and Zoning Manager. I want to introduce our current chair, Michael Pennick.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is my first report, so correct me if I don't do anything correctly. I'm the chair of the Historic Resources Commission. We are a commission of five right now. We meet to and are responsible for reviewing applications for certificates of appropriateness to exterior changes in the downtown historic district. And we have five members right now, and we, we had some turnover in the last year. But we, we have one meeting a month, and we typically see two to three applications, sometimes more. If we don't have any meeting, any applications on par, we'll move to the, to the next month. We are looking forward to the new design standards, which the city has voted to implement. They're not yet implemented, but we're looking forward to those. We see our job as trying to assist the citizen to get their project done. Anybody that wants to come and participate in making downtown better and putting money into these old historic buildings is doing a great service. We try to help them as much as we can. We're definitely in debt to our, our staff liaison. And Mr. Davis, thank you for being our council liaison, and to the city attorney's office for sending Ms. Harper. She's extremely helpful. Right now, our main issue is that sometimes we have a little bit of trouble having a quorum for our meeting. So I know we've all tried to encourage other citizens to submit applications to become part of the commission, to get some more members. And I think you have the ability to maybe appoint some new members. We've lost a couple from attrition in the past few months. So we're looking forward to having some new members so we can serve the citizens better without having to cancel meetings for lack of quorum. And other than that, we're looking forward to the new design standards coming out and using those to help the city move forward. If there's any questions, happy to field them.
All right, Mr. Pennick, looks like you're all clear, so you must, must do a pretty good job.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, council, moving to item 9.02, UDO Housing Committee Update. Is that the chairman, Mr. Hondros, or is it going to be Ms. Kelly? I'm still wanting to call you Olivero, but.
Strickland.
All right, okay. Is it all set now? Can I call you Strickland now?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, ACM Strickland.
Mayor Colvin, excuse me, please. Would anyone like to make a motion to receive the report?
All right, all right. It's a motion by Councilmember Hare, seconded by Councilmember Hondros to receive the Historic Resource Commission 2024 Report. Any discussion? All right, council, look to you for your votes to receive the report. Councilmember McNair.
That is green, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Motion is unanimous. All right, Ms. Strickland.
Sir, I am only at the podium this evening to provide technical assistance to Councilmember Hondros.
Oh, okay. That's why he's pointing at his mic. So we need to light his mic. All right, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. ACM Strickland. I'm going to narrate from, from the dice, if I may, and. Um, I'm going to narrate from, from the dice, if I may, and, um, ACM Strickland will help us with the slides. You can move to the next one. It's only, uh, a handful of slides, so we'll be brief. Uh, as Mr. Mayor said, I serve at the pleasure of the mayor and, and the citizens of Fayetteville. It's been my honor, along with, uh, Mayor Protam Jensen and Councilmember Green. Uh, and of course, you, Mayor, whenever your schedule permits, you drop in and check on us from time to time. Um, you had given us the charge of reviewing all things development and redevelopment-related. As a committee, we came up with three goals. We've heard and received a lot of great, um, information from staff, and we're working through, um, the challenges with our development and redevelopment policies and procedure. ACM Strickland, next slide, thank you. Um, so we established, uh, three goals. We wanted to take a look at so we, as a committee, would have a better understanding of our processes and procedures for development redevelopment. We wanted to identify any current challenging s, challenges with our policies and procedures and, uh, look at ways that we can positively impact our customer experience, which of course, our customers are the taxpaying residents of the ci, of the city of Fayetteville. And, uh, we wanted to also, as a committee, uh, inform the public on, um, shared, share, uh, information with our development processes and procedures so that we all, as a community, have a better understanding. Next slide, so, um, during our meetings over the last year, we've, again, received a lot of good information from our staff. Um, we've looked at, uh, chapter thirty of our Code of Ordinances, which is our UDO, our Unified Development Ordinance. Uh, one of my favorites, we always, uh, try to look at peer, uh, peer cities and peer communities when we can. We looked at housing trends. As we all know, the housing issue here locally is kind of twofold. We have a, a housing shortage where there's simply not enough housing units to keep up with demand, but also the affordability component of that. Um, so the, as a committee, we're looking at ways that we could positively impact both of those areas. We also looked at our portal. The city, um, over the last couple of years has a new portal or IDT, um, where all, um, applications for permits are cataloged. So any resident can, uh, go on, set up a user password, and you can pretty much see similar to our rezoning, uh, where there's cases and you can get information on a case that's in your neighborhood or in your area. Uh, if you see work going on in a building in your neighborhood, you can go on, see if there is a permit pulled and what, what exactly they're doing there. We reviewed and staff educated us on change of use and change of occupancy. Those are two, um, items that occur. They're actually dictated, like most things we do with North Carolina general statute. Also reviewed permitting processes, um, development review, uh, and a lot of other good information. Two, two of the other areas where we get a lot of interest from the general public is signs and landscaping. So we looked at those items. Um, next slide, please. Um, some of the challenges we looked at, again, sign ordinances. There was certain, um, discussion in the committee about potentially getting a outside consultant to help us with some of these UDO challenges. Of course, sign ordinance and landscaping are two of those areas. Um, and there actually is a consultant already, um, doing some work with the city on the, uh, in the way of signs. Also, we looked at clearcutting, uh, individual lots as well as larger tracts of land. Um, buffering, which is, um, landscaping and buffers between zoning. Um, Mr. Mayor, I think you had brought up, uh, looking at special use permits. So we had, as a city, a larger volume of triggers for special use permits. So we're working through, um, how we can, um, possibly, uh, positively impact that, have lower triggers for special use permits and get more in line with our peer cities. And also, again, looked at, um, how we can positively impact attainable housing. Uh, the next slide there. Um, and again, more challenges we looked at, um, in the way of adding additional units to the market is ADUs, the accessory dwelling units, and then just development fees. Um, this speaks to, again, to the affordability of housing. We looked at everything from utility fees to stormwater, uh, regulations and fees. Um, and again, how we can brainstorm and, um, come up with ways to positively impact those as best as we can as a committee and as a, as a board. Um, next slide, please. So some of the issues we're working on, and we have actually an agenda item, uh, ten point oh one, working with staff to revise, uh, and make some, uh, minor text amendments where they, uh, make sense. Also, working with our, um, ECD, our, um, Economic Community Development Department. Chris Colley, of course, is the director and his team on, um, how, how they can help, um, make a positive impact. We have an item from that department, I think, coming up tonight, eight point oh, oh, we actually approved it at eight point oh eight. Um, and then we looked, also looked at emerging issues, sidewalks, landscaping, and right away, who's responsible for those items. And, um, again, the next slide, so, uh, the committee members there, you see, and we actually have a meeting, our next meeting scheduled, and we typically meet on the third Tuesday of every month. So the next meeting scheduled for January the twenty first of twenty twenty five. We have, um, a couple of items on that, uh, agenda. Uh, again, we'll be looking at permitting and inspections and how we can positively, uh, impact that, make that experience better. And also, on the ten point oh one item that we're approving this evening, text amendments, um, there was one that, um, we pulled, the single-family homes, how we can encourage development and, uh, positively impact some of our lack of housing inventory. Uh, we'll be reviewing that in January and hopefully bringing it to council shortly thereafter. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, very thorough. Um, you and, uh, committee members have been doing a lot of hard work. This is not easy stuff, and so, uh, we did it a few years back, and you, you all have been doing great, so we appreciate that. I'll go to Councilmember Hare, he had a question or comment?
Right, thank you, Mayor, uh, and thanks to our UDO, uh, committee for all your hard work. Yes, sir, I do understand it, it's very involved. Uh, Mr. Chairman, help me understand, this was the item that I was speaking about upstairs, and I couldn't put my, I didn't have my notes with me. Uh, as I stated during the work session, I, I'm not in support of straight clearcutting and the buffering. I think one of the items wa, was to change the buffering from the twenty-foot buffering, maybe to take it down to the ten-foot buffering. And, um, th, there's always issues and concerns with citizens, uh, residential areas or professional or commercial areas. Wherever it is that we have a full, thick buffer, and then we go into that buffer, cut it down, and then try to come back with, uh, a buffer that really doesn't meet the measure of, of, of the surrounding or the community or the professional area when we could have left the very thick buffer there. So explain it to me, explain if I'm out of order a little bit, uh, uh, hold on. Uh, because I want to make sure I'm on the same page, because, you know, I, I spoke about this. I think we had this at the work session about not supporting, uh, clearcutting.
So, Councilman Hare?
Yes.
That is actually part of the public hearing that is after these, uh, reports tonight.
Okay, then I will, uh, reiterate it after the, uh, the public hearing. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hare. Don't see any other questions, Councilman, uh, Councilman Chairman Hondros, but you want to in, introduce your team members? I think you did, but I know.
Yeah, Mayor Protam Jensen and Councilmember Green, as well as yourself, when your schedule permits.
Thank you. All right, well, I'll turn it over to you. Did you want to, uh, make a motion to receive? Well, maybe one of the other teammates will, uh, make the motion to receive the report. Councilmember Green, you would like to have the honors?
Yes, sir. I would make a motion that we receive this port, as, uh, this report as presented.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Green to receive the report. Uh, second by Council, uh, Mayor Protam. Uh, any discussion on the motion to receive the report? All right, council?
That is done.
Uh, Council, Councilmember McNair?
That's green, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Thank you.
And we have one voter in opposition, it's Councilmember Hare, so motion carries nine one. All right, thank you, Councilmember Hondros and Green and Mayor Protam. All right, council, moving to FCEDC, or the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Robo?
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. Thank you for giving this opportunity today. I will say, I am happy to be interrupted anytime by a motion and a second to accept our report, and if it's, uh, all right with you, uh, we will, I will go at my normal speed, which for those at home on your YouTube settings, slow down to half-speed and it'll be able to keep up. But I'll be happy to stop and slow down and back up, but I know you have a lot of ground to cover tonight. So, uh, if I may, as you're well aware, we are FCEDC, a jointly funded by the city, county, and private sector, your economic development organization. Uh, our current board here, uh, you can see our chair, Catherine Cox, uh, Mr. Tim Bryant, who was here earlier tonight, our PTOC, our vice chair. Uh, we just recently welcomed County Chair Kirk Devier, and we thank outgoing Chair Glenn Adams for his service. We have a primary, our primary goals are attracting new business, that, uh, projects that will increase investment in the community, expand our local tax base, creating jobs through, uh, new projects and expansion of existing industry, identifying sites and buildings for expedited development, and supporting existing companies by facilitating expansions, connecting them with resources for the business operations. Uh, I'd say over the last seven years, we have been successful in securing, uh, roughly five thousand new jobs for Fayetteville and Cumberland County and announcing over one point three billion dollars of capital investment. We then use our additional resources to market. Uh, sorry, I apologize, we're a little skewed on here. You can see some of the marketing activities we undertake, getting our value-added messaging out to site selectors, brokers, international companies, uh, and working on special projects such as, uh, trying to bring I six eighty-five here. Uh, and to date, that has been a hundred and twelve new projects this year, and we're on pace to be the most busy year we've had. Uh, but vi, uh, projects are good, twenty-seven visits, that's great, but announcements are what really matters. And so, uh, we do have in your packet our, uh, monthly infographic. It's available on our website. All of this information will be available to anyone in the public should they like. But as you can see, things have been improving. Our unemployment rate is going down, the number of people working is going up. Uh, I believe it was roughly one year ago, we had the ninth-highest unemployment rate. Now we are tied for twentieth. That is not where we want to be, but going from nine to twenty is a better spot, you know, by, by quite a bit there, a hundred percent, uh, improvement. And here you can see some of the work we do with existing industry. Booze Allen Hamilton, helping them expand, uh, working to secure a grant, working with your team here for Phillips Towing. Uh, we provide different, uh, affinity organizations for transportation logistics. Our plant managers, uh, making sites and buildings available to Fayetteville Business Park, three hundred and sixty acres out on Dunn Road. That is where NVR has its new home, uh, which you approved those projects there. And you can see a new spec building going up at ten-ten Dunn Road. Uh, we also work to promote, and, uh, we have a number of buildings that are currently going under contract. Projects announced last year, Project Arrow, no secret there, three hundred plus jobs, eight hundred and sixty-seven million dollars investment in the first phase, adding additional half-billion in the second. I will say that their first round of bonds, which were approved by the LGC roughly a month ago, did close last Friday. So that project is moving forward in the fastest timeline. It is allowed by the law governing the financing vehicles they're using. Uh, we announced STS, that was a great project up in the Merkison Road corridor. Uh, neat thing there, that is an old, former closed landfill that we were able to convert back to active use, creating jobs and reducing, uh, truck traffic on the highway. And of course, Amazon, uh, being open, probably the most, uh, well-covered project that I've worked here in Fayetteville. We have well over a thousand full-time jobs, uh, currently out at the site. We see NVR, uh, DBAT held there, uh, ribbon cutting today. And we continue to work on getting sites ready. We love to use OPM, other people's money. And you can see there with the progress on the San Hills Road site, from a tree site to a pad-ready shovel-ready site, to now a graded site with a new access road. And I'm proud to say that project is under option for what would, uh, hopefully be roughly a billion-dollar investment, uh, out there. We also facilitated the next-generation workforce assessment, where we conducted interviews with existing industry. This was something largely championed by the mayor and you on council, uh, trying to identify what are the needs of tomorrow's employers and how can we can have our workforce and our students ready for them so they can have a more prosperous economic future, but also that we can attract emerging industries. Uh, we are working with the Black Voices Project to create the Black Voice Museum, and that group is holding their first, uh, focus, set of focus groups, nine AM on Thursday. If there's anyone interested in participating in that, please, uh, reach out to me. And later on tonight, uh, we have the Can Do Carolina Grant on your agenda. Uh, as far as activities in progress and items we definitely need your support on, that is bringing I six eighty-five here to Cumberland County. As has been covered, there are three potential routes for that. Uh, we, there is a, a legend, urban legend, if you will, that forty was supposed to come through here and ended up not for some, uh, unique reasons. We want that to never, ever happen again. Uh, the proposed route that you see in red for I six eighty-five would benefit Fayetteville, Cumberland County, and Fort Liberty. So, uh, we appreciate your support on that. Rails Raleigh, passenger rail connecting us to what will be the future passenger rail corridor up the east coast onto DC, and then working to create a task force around the next-generation workforce development project. Uh, we are pushing forward with our HR talent portal, which you supported through the federal lobbying efforts, requesting funds for that, a four-million-dollar grant from HUD. And I think probably most importantly, uh, where we very much need cooperation and collaboration is we have tied up our best site, our best second, our second-best site, and our almost kind of okay sites. So we are working to develop a mega-site of over nine hundred acres, but we are very limited in our supply of buildable sites that have road, water, and sewer infrastructure available to them. And that needs to be a focus. We are going to continue to create, uh, job creation, uh, opportunities. So we ask that you continue to support our work, uh, both in funding respectfully, but also through your pro-business attitude. You have been there every time we've asked to make a strategic investment, to close a deal on a project, uh, continue to push for I six eighty-five to two ninety-five. Uh, we are very supportive of the work being done at the airport, both to recruit new flights, develop around the airport, and to improve that corridor down three oh one, the gateway to Fayetteville, the gateway to Cumberland County for those that travel by air. And lastly to say, uh, we look forward to working with you on the, in partnership with the other, uh, equity players around the next-generation workforce study. And we have seen a strong resurgence in interest in the Can Do branding. We heard it expressed here organically tonight, and, uh, folks have said, uh, we have the partners that originally started this, but now we've had a number of partners that were not in the first discussion groups who want to be part of the conversation going forward. With that, respectfully request a motion to approve the report. Happy to answer any questions, happy to go back over anything. I know that was a lot very quickly.
Well, we turned it on half-speed, so we kept up with you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Davis, and then Hare, and.
Hare first.
Sir?
Hare first.
Oh, uh, well, wait a minute, I didn't get to the bottom of this. So I had Benevente first, but I think he was going to make the motion when Robo was being facetious for that. Yeah, uh, uh, okay, all right, Councilmember Green?
That's all I was going to do.
All right, now, Councilmember Hare?
Yeah, uh, I was trying to get in there, but, uh, to say thank you, but, guys, Robo, man, you and your group are excellent, man. You do a lot of great things for our city, for Cumberland County, and I salute the body, I salute the committee for all the hard, hard work that you guys are, are doing, that you're bringing to us. And, uh, I'd be more than happy to, uh, support the motion.
All right, uh, Councilmember Davis?
Move forward. Okay.
All right, so, so I did have some, some questions. Let me make sure I got everybody. Councilmember Bene, uh, Banks McLaughlin?
Well, it was just a comment. Um, I was just going to thank you for all the work that you've done. Um, this is a great way to end our twenty twenty-four year. There probably should have been the last, um, item on our, um, on our agenda. But again, I just wanted to say thank you, and I hope, in the future, we start looking towards, um, biotech companies coming to our city. But again, I know it takes a lot with infrastructure and making sure we connect with the, do you have something?
We know, we just signed up to attend with the state, uh, the Medical Device Manufacturing Show in collaboration with the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. They called this morning, and so we'll be heading out there, uh, just after the first of the year to try to get some of those companies here.
Okay, grading some AI. Okay, but I was, again, I just want to say thank you for all the work you've done. Thanks.
She's talking next-gen stuff, I love that. I love that. All right, so, Robo, did have a couple of things to point out. One, um, you know, again, uh, sitting on the board, I mean, there's a lot you do that, um, you don't really beat your own drum, but y, you and I did a meeting probably a year ago with, uh, Piedmont Natural Gas President by Zoom, yeah, he's out of Charlotte, uh, told about the sites that we have not being ready to go. Um, uh, did understa, hear from them recently that, uh- Did hear from them recently that they have the infrastructure in place that our sites now have the ability to do that. How important is it to have a site with infrastructure like gas, power, water, et cetera?
Absolutely, Mayor. That is an example of people don't, you know, why did so, what one community win a project that may have looked at us and we did not? A good example of that is how we felt about it, the Atlantic Coast Pipeline was going to bring additional capacity here. We had a few billion dollars where the projects lined up. We had a company that ended up in another part of the state. They loved our site. They loved our community. They loved all the partnerships we had here. When their gas utilization number came down, they said, thank you. We physically cannot be in your community. And that is where leadership, you and then then Chair Adams sat there, we sat down with Piedmont Natural Gas. And I can tell you now that just a few years later, they have, are bringing online the improvements necessary because they wanted Atlantic Coast Pipeline too, came as a shock to them when it didn't come. But they have made the infrastructure upgrades that will provide our community the same level of service that we would have had should we have gotten the pipeline. So we had to adjust, we had to adapt, and now we can go after those projects again. We can go after food processing projects where it wasn't feasible. It is not a game of selection. It's a game of elimination. If you don't have the water, if you don't have the sewer, if you don't have the workforce, if you don't have the natural gas, you are just out. It's not personal, but they have to physically be able to be successful in your community. And I think these are the things that quietly we've been working on. And I very much want to say that everyone on my team appreciate all of their work, our board. But ultimately, without you and the county and the municipal partners, we are just facilitators. In the end of the day, you're the ones that approve the incentives, and you're the ones that help us make those grants happen. So thank you for that.
All right. And as we talk about jobs of tomorrow, I know we had a couple of crypto mining companies that chose Cal Fayetteville, one even expanded after it was here. How are we doing in that space? You know, they require awful lot of power delivery to mine crypto. With that having such a promising future, it appears that, that things are moving in the right direction for that. How are we coming along with, with being prepared to offer more of that or to cluster that?
Yeah, I think that both in that area, in the fintech and cybersecurity, we've had incredible results recently working with technology companies that are on the next generation of what, from sensors to automation to aviation. And that is also where you're seeing a robust overbuild by a number of broadband providers here that are going to be, continue to build out our area. So I think that we, as an affordable and accessible location, is able to draw on the top talent coming out of our universities, F T C C with its cyber partnership, F S U with their programming, and coming off of Fort Liberty. Honestly, that'll probably be the fastest growing sector we have, and our studies show that's really starting to yield results.
All right. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Benavente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Robo, could you help me understand something? Because I feel like you've got a unique position to where you can help lead the city and the county on finding some very, very mutual common grounds to be a focus. Because you could say objectively, financially, it benefits both of y'all just to focus on. Have you found that in your board meetings that you're, that you're getting that? Can we do more to sort of highlight that need?
When it comes to what we need to support us at the E D C to close a project deal for incentive or grants of the city and the county, you guys have been a perfect record. There are larger things that will make us more competitive. Site selection consultant said recently to me and a few others, if you can figure it out, if you can figure out childcare, you can write your own ticket. I'm not saying we can, but that's how important it is. And say the community that gets that right can pretty much do whatever they want. We've talked very sincerely here about credentialing, stacking credentials, completion rates, and education. If we want to not only have a better economic future for our students, but also attract talent to stay here, live here, and future generations of their children be here, elevating educational opportunities for all of our citizens is of critical import. So those are two things that kind of stretch outside of my day-to-day. And that I would say, if you can support that, all the better. But from what we do every day, you've been incredibly supportive.
I've heard childcare. I heard improving educational opportunities. I think it's making sure that Cumberland County schools, our tech school, our universities are all just, you know, the, the top tier. I mean, however much we can do, whatever we can do to take them to the next level is welcome. Could you speak at all to our local workforce? And I think maybe some work you've done with Mr. Jesse Gardner as it relates to reentry and making sure that folks who are interested in getting their life back on track are also needing to make sure that they've got a record that will allow them to do that?
Yeah, I, I think everything that we can do from expungement clinics to identifying and partnering with employers who are able to hire, maybe not all, but some. Every job, every employer that is willing to take someone with something in their past needs to be filled with a, by a person who has that, because those jobs are rare. And we want to maximize that opportunity. It, it's really simple. You either find people a way to help pay into the system, or you pay for them in the system. And it's just, it's, it's a plain spoken truth that way. I will say one more thing, though, is that you've previously invested in infrastructure extensions, things like Cedar Creek Industrial Park, things like the C I C. All of those projects now, even some of them decades in the making, the Military Business Park are now being built out. So it will take a real significant investment through partnership and cooperation, hopefully with state or federal support. But we will have to stretch our utility lines out further than they currently sit to get to undeveloped tracks that can create jobs without impacting neighborhoods around them.
Thank you, Mr. Robo. Again, it's, Mr. Mayor, I just asked that we...
Hold on. I got Councilmember Thompson that is light press.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question just arose in my mind as you was talking with the mayor, and it's about infrastructure. And maybe it's because I'm the P W C liaison, I'm going to ask this question. Because you said that your number one, your number two, and your number three locations have already been used. So how did you find those four, five, and six locations? And how do you prepare to get that infrastructure there so when these companies do come, it's already ground ready?
You actually, your predecessors, because it goes back a bit, extended great foresight and actually made investments into those water lines, sewer lines, or even acquiring the properties and making them shovel-ready. We have identified the sites. We have property owners willing to sell. The county actually has acquired, started acquiring some of that land. But getting water and sewer to that next generation of sites does take another round of investment. Now, it comes back many times over in tax base and job creation. But if we let it sit idle, it will fall into some form of other development.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Benavente.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I just move that we receive the report from the F C D C.
All right. Got a motion by Councilmember Benavente. I think it was seconded or proposed to be seconded by Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin. I think she had it early, huh? No, we haven't made a motion on this one yet. All right. Counsel, any further discussion, which we've had plenty? All right. Look to you for votes on this. Councilmember McNair, your pleasure, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is the green for me.
All right, green. All right. Thank you. Thank you for the kind words. Yes, sir. All right. Item 9.04, the Record Review Presentation. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name's Specialist Biggerstaff. I'm here on behalf of the, the chairperson. Do we have the? Okay. Thank you. The Record Review Board is a reactionary board that responds to tow companies that have been suspended, that have chosen to appeal that suspension. It's comprised of a committee chair, two sergeants from the police department, and four separate tow company licensees who are there to hear the, the suspension of that, that tow company. Like I said, these are the members, the, the committee chair, two police sergeants. And then right now, we have three members. Mr. Roland Horn unfortunately passed away last year, and we are in conversation to find a fourth person to take his spot. Like I said, the main goals and objectives of the Record Review Board are to listen to tow companies that have been suspended, that are appealing it, to either uphold or lift that suspension. We have not had any tow companies that were suspended this calendar year. Also, this calendar year, we have inspected, gone through the application process and inspected all 22 of those wrecker companies. There are no failures, and there are no deficiencies with any of those companies. And do we have any questions?
Councilmember Hondros and then Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Biggerstaff. For clarification, the wrecker services you're referring to that potentially get suspended, is that from rotation, or is that from doing business in the city for another reason, or is that specific to?
Yes, sir. That's specific to the rotational list.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would one of the instances for wreckers being suspended, would it be price gouging?
If we get a complaint, so a complaint has to come in in writing to either our Internal Affairs Department or to myself as a wrecker inspector. That complaint is investigated. And if there's a violation of the rules and regulations or a general statute, then that tow company could potentially get suspended.
And how many companies do you have on your list?
Currently, we have 22 companies.
Chief, you had something?
Just a clarification. This, we, this board doesn't govern all wrecker services within the city of Fayetteville.
Oh, doesn't?
These are the rotational wreckers that the city utilizes when there's a wreck on our streets. There's a vehicle that needs to be towed because it's broke down in some, in front of someone's house. Again, this board just governs that portion of the wrecker services within the city of Fayetteville. Those prices are set by the board.
Got you.
If they're charging outside of that pricing, that could be an investigation by the board to have them removed.
Let, let me clarify then, chief. The reason I ask that question is if you go to other states, i.e. Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and you get into a wreck, they have wrecker crews that will sit out there and wait for the police department to finish their job, tow your vehicle, then charge you $1,000 to pick your vehicle up because there's nothing else that you can do about it. I know that from experience.
There are state statutes that, that pertain to predatory towing, and those, those aren't governed by this board, though.
Got you. Thank you, chief. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Hare.
Thanks, Mayor. This is one concern that I hear a lot about, and I see it a lot across the city. And if this is the area where that question can be asked. I see many, many wreck damages across our city. And I know that, I understand how our wrecker rotation works. My question is, what can we do to make sure that at the wreck, all the damages are there, broken bumpers, whatever the case may be, that that wrecker cleans that area up? Okay? So that it's safe to drive for the residents? Now, I know that we have been having this complaint for years. I hear it often. You know, not every day, but I hear it often. And I see it often where it just doesn't get done. How can we put, is there anything that we can do to put some teeth in this thing?
Mr. Hare, I can, I'll try to do that along with the chief. This is not his area.
Okay.
The, quite often, if, if you are on the rotational list and you are called by the Fayetteville Police Department, they require you to clean up that site.
Yes, sir.
And if you do not, we will send you back. And that is also grounds that you could be found in violation of our, of the privilege to be on the rotational tow list. Quite often in this town and many others, people have accidents. They will exchange information and/or they will drive off. And that's the bumpers that you see on the side of the road, and we get those calls as well. But chief, would you add anything else to that beyond what the Record Review Board does?
Again, we go back to what the, this board has oversight of. Those are the wreckers that are called by the police department. If, if you're involved in a wreck and you have a buddy that owns a wrecker service, you can call that person to come pick up, but they're not held to the same standards as the rotational wreckers that show up on, on the behest of the Fayetteville Police Department when they're dispatched. Part of that, that service to be on that wreck, they have to have the cleanup tools, the absorbent tools, things to clean up any liquids or fluids left on the roadway. Those are all inspectable items by the wrecker board. And, and Officer Biggerstaff is here tonight as the wrecker inspector, but he's presenting off for the board or the commission that is actually several other individuals.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate it. I even appreciate the response that our city manager gave us. But some of the things that I do see, and that residents do see, that's not a fender bender between two residents and they exchange numbers and they going about that way. When you see it broken down or see it sitting out there on the side of the curb, there, there's a concern. I don't know if that's something.
So again, there's two issues.
Let me finish it, chief, please. I don't know if that's something that can be done on our part or you all's part. But it, it is a problem for the city and for the safety of people that are driving. Go ahead, sir. Sorry.
And again, the, the board doesn't have any control over those aspects. There are statutory requirements to tow a car that's abandoned or, or left on the roadside or is inoperable. So those are separate and apart from what this actual board would have oversight of.
So a question for the city attorney or the, or the manager. Taxi cabs have to have some type of, or did at one time have to have some kind of permit to operate here. Do, do wreckers have to do the same? Whether I'm on a rotation or not, just to do business in the city of Fayetteville?
For a wrecker, to have a wrecker, no, I do not believe they require any inspection from the city of Fayetteville.
Okay.
A wrecker. Taxi cabs are regulated and they have to be for cleanliness. I think we actually check driver background still. They have to have a placard, but it is different.
So does, does the statute allow something or require something special for taxis regulation but on a local level than it would for another industry?
Mayor Colvin, unfortunately, I'm unable to answer that right now, but I'm happy to do some research and get back to you.
Reason I ask, if, if possible, if, if the research says you can, counsel, you could consider saying if you're going to provide these services within our jurisdiction, that you will be required to clean up, whether you're on rotation or not. Like, they are able to enforce it because they want to continue to be on the list. But like you said, if, if there's an accident between two parties and you say you want us to call a rotation, I say, no, I'm gonna call my buddy. Can you, can you have some local ordinance that requires cleanup of debris?
Well, Mayor, any car that has to be towed from, from a location, it is inoperable. Quite often, the police department would be called.
Well, I'm not saying that. I think what he's saying is that even if you're called, and I gotta, I, I know a personal wrecker, I'm a member of AAA, and you offer to call your person, and I say, no, I'll take care of it, I'm able to do that, right?
Yes, and not, not all accidents have a police response, okay? And, and not all wreckers provide service to wrecked vehicles. We have wreckers that operate within our town that, that do repossession businesses, things like that. They come from all over the state to, to Fayetteville to operate. And as I know of, there's no actual certifying or certificate to operate a wrecker within.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just speaking, if, if the city attorney does her research and comes back with information, I am also concerned with bumpers on the road. I mean, it likes, it makes our community look bad. And oftentimes, you know, our litter crews can't pick that stuff up because it's too big, you know, and it just remains out there for a long time. So that could be something the council could consider at some point if, if she says we're able to, to do that or to regulate that. All right. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to make a motion to receive the report.
All right. Your, your motion, your floor, sir.
I move to receive the report.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Davis, seconded by Councilmember Mahandros. Mr. Hewitt, you, you voting, or what you pressure button for? Accident? Okay. All right. Counsel, look to you before you vote. Councilmember McNair?
As Green, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, counsel, moving to item 10.01, Proposed Text Amendments, Chapter 30. Kind of hit a little bit of this a few moments ago, but Mr. Harmon will clarify for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me grab this presentation up here real quick. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and counsel. As you know, generally twice a year, we bring groups of text amendments before you, kind of in the fall and spring. These are to the U D O, Chapter 30. They are typically for three main reasons, either clean up for clarity and simplify areas of the code. uh, things that developers or the community has come to us and asked uh, for changes or uh, policy changes as the ci- city moves forward. Um, if you recall back in November, at your work session, uh, we brought these same items to you uh, just as a brief discussion before taking them to the planning commission. Uh, we did take them to the planning commission in November with a few um, suggestions uh, from the city council that came out of that work session. And we are back tonight for hopefully an adoption. So the first item that we have is amending the historic resources commissions requirements on a quorum, and that's to exclude vacant positions in the calculation. The second one we have is to amend standards for wireless communications towers. These are uh, aviation hazards. Uh, these were federal uh, regulations that have come down through the state and now to us that we're, need to include in our ordinance. The third one is amending our use table to clarify in the downtown two zoning district uh, that only allowed uh, drive-throughs on certain streets. Uh, and then number four is adding specialty eating establishments to the list of uses that were allowed to have drive-throughs um, in the DT two. Uh, and then finally, the last one is to amend our clearcutting permit standards to include an exemption for sites of one acre or less uh, to provide what originally we had come forward with a ten-foot buffer. Council suggested twenty. Uh, we took it to the planning commission as twenty, and that's the recommendation tonight. And that's a twenty-foot buffer all the way around the property. If you would hold any questions that you have until after you conduct your public hearing, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll be glad to uh, help with any technical questions after that.
Got you, sir. Well, we appreciate that, Mr. Harmon. Uh, at this time, we are preparing to hold a public hearing where the city council formally seeks your input. Individuals designed to speak in the hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk and by name and address before the beginning of tonight's meeting. We'll begin with a staff presentation, which we've heard, and then we'll move into the formal hearing, fifteen minutes. Be allotted for those in favor and those opposed of the item. Individual speakers, however, are limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. So when the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then begin to address the council. When the light changes from green to amber, that means you have thirty seconds. And when the timer uh, rings or the light turns red, that means your time has expired. So with that, I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Ma'am, we have no speakers for this item.
All right, so with that, uh, council, any questions for staff? Well, I guess I'll close the public hearing. And council, any questions for staff or? All right, Councilmember Here.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to continue. Thank you, Mr. Harmon, please, Mr. Harmon. I wanted to continue my discussion about clearcutting and the buffer. And you said that there's a recommendation from ten feet to twenty feet surrounding the property. Before I get into my, the depth of my question, right now, on that, that particular uh, land use that we, that you had on the screen earlier, what is the present um, buffer distance?
So currently on the small one acre or less pieces of property?
Yes, sir.
For a clearcutting permit, there is no requirement for a buffer. So, so this would be an increase uh, in that?
Say that again now? You said, did the increase of that part again, which just stated?
So, so this twenty-foot buffer would be an increase over what is currently uh, on those uh, small one acre or less properties if they want to clearcut?
Because presently, they are being completely clearcutted.
They can.
With no buffer.
Well, yes, with no buffer, that's what we're speaking of. Okay. Now, on this particular uh, acreage that you're speaking of, is this across the zoning board?
This would be in all zoning districts.
Okay. Now, this is where I stand, council, as I stated during the work session. It, it is a big issue for businesses, especially residential areas, when there's a clearcutting that takes place and there's a proper buffer, they're a wooded area, very thick within that wooded area, then it's clearcutted. Then they come back, the contractor, going to whatever they have to, that the buffer may be, or the, when they come to, to zoning or planning, they go back and they go to planning, putting in smaller bushes, and if it requires a six-foot fence, which is normally part of the, the buffing, uh, the buffering from the UDO, that's what we do. And the community or the residents, the residential area or the commercial or profession, whatever it may be, but especially in the residential area, because I hear it all the time, I see it all the time, they do not get the proper buffering in between that area that they once had. So my suggestion that I'm asking here today is not allow the clearcutting, but take the clearcutting up to the twenty feet on the buffering and let that be it. Not clear it all the way out and then go back to try to plan it. Because it does not give, I mean, if anything, I would love to have thirty or fifty feet in between it, but nevertheless, I understand where we are. But to clearcut the buffer completely and then to go back to rebuild a buffer, I don't think that works for-
So, so Mr. Harmon, let me make sure I'm clear. Right now, no buffer is required, is what you're saying, on an acre or less?
Yes.
So, so Councilmember, what this is, yeah, so this is-
Go ahead, go ahead. I'm listening.
Yeah, so what you, what this is proposing is that we require at least a twenty-foot buffer. So really, we're making it more restrictive than it currently is?
Than it currently is.
Ye- yes, and I'm following you on that. I'm with that. What I'm asking is, where could we be within uh, adjusting the ordinance where if they're going to clear the property, that they clear up to whichever one is voted on and accepted tonight instead of completely cutting it like it is right now? That's what I'm saying. Let the buffer stay there and cut up to the buffer.
So, so if it's a buffer required, I guess what I'm hearing, if it, if there's a twenty-foot buffer required, I can't clear everything out and then create my own twenty-foot buffer? Is that?
So, so there, there's two different buffers that, that really come into play. This is a buffer on a piece of property that is not in the process of being developed. Someone has a piece of property, it's an acre or less, and they want to clear some of it out. You'd have to leave that twenty feet all the way around it.
Yes.
If they're coming in to build on the property, there's a whole different set of standards that you have to adhere to during the building process for buffering. And that is not part of what we're talking about tonight.
Well, as we move into discussion tonight, council, uh, think about a number of those phone calls that you receive. Some of those conversations that you receive from residents or uh, uh, builders or professional or, you know, whatever the zoning that is in. And when they were saying, well, if you just would have left it like it was up to a certain amount. So that is what I'm, I'm asking uh, tonight, and of course, it is on the, you know, for discussion.
All right. So, Mr. Harmon, let me, let me make sure I'm, I'm tracking, okay? So I have a piece of property that's overgrown, right? I get a lot of calls about overgrown, you need to clean this lot up. So I just hadn't done anything in years, okay?
Yes.
I, I don't plan to do it, don't plan to develop it or haven't applied for any permits or anything. Now, I send my folks in to clean it up, you know, cutting the, the undergrowth and what have you. Am I not allowed to do, if this passes, I can only do that up to twenty feet from my surrounding property owner? Or what, what is the, what is this going to change?
Right. Typically, you can always clean up kind of the underb- growth, under uh, stuff that's going on, and you don't get any permits for that. It's when you start clearing out the actual trees, that's when this clearcutting permit, and that's when the uh, your, the tree calibers and all of that comes-
Over a certain diameter.
Yeah, all of that comes into play at that point. If you're just going through and trying to clean up the property without taking out trees, it's really not part, part of this process.
Okay. Yeah, because I, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm kind of a little confused because the, the buffer kind of seems to me to keep the separation there. Um, and this is adding more separation, correct?
Yeah.
All right, so council, any other comments, questions on, Jennifer, we still got the previous vote on there. Can you clear that?
So, Mr. Mayor, is there a, a opportunity, if there are not going to be any more?
Yeah, I see Councilmember Benavente. I, I didn't, I couldn't get to the screen, Jennifer, just clear it. All right, Councilmember Benavente?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Um, I thought I was good on this before when we were upstairs, and it got a little bit confusing during that discussion. Um, I think there's some council members, um, that I believe I, I tend to um, want their insight from on this topic. I don't know if Councilmember Hondros or Green just have any perspective to add on all of this and whether, um, you know, where they're at.
Are you looking at other council members to vote?
No, not to vote, but just to, I want to understand, just to understand. I mean, we, we've got some people on council that I believe um, have a, you know, place of expertise, and I, I just certainly welcome their input, uh, just to help me understand.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Hondros?
I mean, if not, then no, no worries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think maybe where the um, confusion is coming from, so this, this proposed text amendment is only for an undeveloped piece of property, and please, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, that, there's no plans for it to be developed. It's just an undeveloped piece of property, um, where no one's pulling any permits. There's no, there's no engineer drawings, they're not going to the city, um, to, to the TRC, to the Technical Review Committee, they're not planning on building anything. They just want to take some trees out of their property. This requires a buffer where today there is none. They could take out every tree all the way up to the, to the property line. So I think this is where Mr. Harmon is saying this is actually more restrictive because we're saying you can't cut all those trees, you have to leave twenty feet on all sides. If a property owner-
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was trying to-
If a property owner, staff is there, if you don't, so, so if, if the property owner or a developer does um, have plans drawn and is gonna build the, you know, gonna develop the property and pull permits, it goes through the whole UDO process, there's a whole different landscaping, which I think is where your concerns are. This is just for an undeveloped piece of property that's gonna stay undeveloped. I think that's, that's the point.
I've got some things I need you to convince Councilmember Benavente to vote for me. All right, Councilmember Here.
Let, let, let me, let me follow up because on what my esteemed colleague just stated to my left, I want to make sure that that's what I heard from Mr. Harmon. Uh, please, team. So, Mr. Harmon, according to what Mr. Hondros just stated, are you saying that we cut up to the twenty feet? Because that's not what I understood you to say. So if there's going to be the clearcutting or cutting, excavating of, of a property, uh, a lot, it, it's going to be cut up if this proposal is accepted, up to the twenty feet? Not clearcutting it and then rebuilding a twenty-foot buffer?
Right.
Right, on one of these where they're not in a development stage at this point. They're just looking to clear some of the property.
Okay, I'm not following you, just right, you said right. Are you saying right, that they cut up to the twenty feet?
Yes, in this particular case-
If that's what we are speaking of, then I can, I can accept this motion. If that's what you're saying, but that's not what I thought you initially said. I thought you initially was saying that this, this particular acreage is completely clearcutted, then you come back and rebuild the buffer. If you're saying going up to twenty feet for the buffer all the way around the acreage, then I support that, if that's what you're saying.
You got to get to twenty feet and stop.
Right.
There is no cutting.
Stop, if that's what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay, then so be it, okay?
All right, glad we got that. Councilmember Benavente, I mean, uh, Councilmember Davis?
I was gonna make the motion to receive.
Please, well.
Yeah, I mean, as long as, you know, we all feel good about everything.
Well, we're gonna find out on this vote here. Yes, sir. All right. All right, it's motion by Councilmember Davis, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hondros, looked like he beat you to it, Councilmember Thompson. All right, uh, council, we've had discussion. We'll look to you for action on this. Councilmember McNair?
It's green, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All right, motion carries unanimously. Good job, council. Uh, all right, council, moving to item eleven point oh one, Can Do Cities Can Do Grant Program. Mr. Van Gheens, see if you can do it tonight.
We, we will try. Thank you for adding this to the agenda. I, I'm excited about the progress we've made uh, through all the factors impacting the design of this program, almost all of which are outside of our control. Just uh, for a little bit of background, uh, you have previously endorsed this initiative and, uh, but requested that it come back to you for a final review. In summary, uh, this project is designed to provide patient, non-interest bearing capital to businesses that have historically had the hardest time acquiring it. Uh, those are, uh, for communities in our low to moderate income census tracts, business owned by women, minorities, and veterans. Uh, and this goes all the way back to your effort to diversify and expand your local procurement opportunities. And what we found through research, it wasn't the ability to get a loan, it wasn't the ability to get training, or to have a willing customer like the city. It was about having the capital that didn't immediately start accruing interest so you could buy the equipment, the machinery, or the other things you needed to be able to provide services. And so working with your team and outside council, uh, we have refined this program to where, where we believe it is ready to go. Uh, you previously adopted, approved, uh, matching two point five million dollars that we secured from the state. Then Senator DeViere was instrumental at that at the time, and the city stepped up to match that and approve those funds. And uh, that will allow us to go out, and I'm going to put this image in here now to say what are the areas that would be served. They are all the ones in the colors here. These are your low to moderate census tracts. So throughout the next couple of slides, when I refer to the area, these are the corridors. Uh, they do overlap with your opportunity zones, they overlap with um, your hub zones and a variety of other programs uh, along the, you'll see the Ramsey Street, Marcuson Road, uh, somewhat All-American and throughout the downtown, and then down Camden Road primarily. If approved, uh, and we're optimistic you will endorse this move forward, this, we will launch with five million dollars worth of funds. This is designed to help established, small businesses who have less than fifteen employees grow exponentially. They can apply for up to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of funding, we anticipate. The average will be somewhere between one hundred and five hundred thousand dollars. The companies will be required to create one job for every twenty-five thousand dollars worth of funding provided. And if they do that, and they will have, every project will be unique, but they will have up to five years to do so, that funding would be, if you will, in a sense, converted to a grant. Uh, if they are not able to, then they would have to repay it, and we would work with them to structure repayment on reasonable terms. In order to qualify, the company, the operation must occur in a qualifying census tract. And full transparency, uh, we are working through all the different regulations on the funds that you're providing, the funds that we raise, uh, a- and a variety of other things to do the best job to cover the most area and the most possible companies here. Uh, but uh, they have to commit to hiring low to moderate in, from, low to moderate income households or be majority owned by residents of low to moderate income census tract. And they must create, creating and retaining five positions. Uh, they have to hire new employees at a wage that is ten percent above the median wage- Uh, they have to hire new employees at a wage that is ten percent above the median wage for that job classification. Worth noting, some programs say ten percent or above the county average. That is not reasonable for all positions. Here, it's above the actual position. If you're hiring a plumber, then it needs to be ten percent above the median wage for plumbers. Uh, they have to create fifty percent of qualifying, qualifying jobs within the first eighteen months, and they have to importantly, commit to working with local business support partners to provide regular updates regarding the project and progress towards employment. And they have to work with us on counseling and planning because more than anything, we want this to be a successful public-private partnership where the business is able to be sustained going forward. Priorities for the funding include the purchase of machinery and equipment, acquisition of commercial vehicles, purchase of computer equipment, furnitures and fixtures, real estate only used by the business, and, uh, improvement and expansion of facilities. This is designed to be for capital expenses, things that will be lasting for the business as it grows. Uh, the criteria for evaluation will be the viability of the proposal, uh, support for local procurement, is it something that would be needed by the city, the county, uh, the community college, the hospitals, and the jobs created per dollar invested. And this will vary in balance for each project. Additional points on the scoring will be awarded to minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses. Additionally, we are looking to advance that next generation of employer here in Fayetteville. And so, uh, there will be points awarded if a company is within the aerospace, technology, defense, or cybersecurity sectors. Again, you previously approved this initiative, uh, we, you requested to come back to you for review prior to launch. Uh, we do, did maintain the original intent of this project, uh, but the final structure has been revised to comply with the recent case law and regulatory guidance. Uh, performance timelines and funding agreements will vary, each project will be unique, and they will be required to document performance. Uh, we will be requesting security of reasonable means. This is not something where we're going to just provide the funds and they can just walk away with them. Uh, if it's a large vehicle, we'll have something on the title, if it's a real estate, we'll take a position. This is about being a good, uh, good partner with them, but also good steward to the public dollar. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions. Uh, I'm going to back up here, I did think I moved quickly through the approval, uh, process here on how it'll go forward. Uh, the projects will come in, I'm actually, seem to have a slide disappear for me here, so let me try to do it from memory. Our hope is to launch January first with your approval. We'll begin marketing and opening a portal for applications, and I apologize, the slide is not on the deck. The projects will then go to a loan committee, and that committee will work with the applicant and local, uh, support agencies to get it ready to where it can meet with their approval. It will then come to you in the form, uh, similar to what you do with an incentive, you'll have a public hearing, you will prove it, and then the funds will be put forward.
All right, thank you, Robert. I did have a question, I see Councilmember Thompson as well. Oh, and here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Robo, I just had one simple question, that was, I was looking at some of your funding priorities. It didn't say anything about insurance.
That was one bullet point in there, uh, crunched down for time, assurance, you mean, of the operator.
Right.
Yeah, we're going to have to negotiate that based on each project. If they're buying, it's very different if they're buying, say, a bucket truck to be able to do wiring and hang internet than if they are buying racks of computer servers or upfitting a building. So, we will be seeking assurance, it might be against individual, it might be against a property, it might be an asset, might be all of the above, but in order to be flexible and responsible, we're going to have to look at each project individually.
Got you. One other question, you mentioned about the jobs, will they be part-time or full-time jobs?
To qualify, they will be full-time jobs. We want them to create as many jobs as possible and to exceed this, and part-time jobs are great, but in order to qualify for forgiveness of the loan, then they would have to be full-time jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Robo.
All right, Councilman here.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Robert, uh, thank you, man, for, for what you're bringing. I, I do like this, but let me ask this question. We have, this is just a, an analysis, we have a company, a minority business, that we, the city, I don't know if it was grant funding or not, we have already financially supported and helped, okay? They are in need, they're still in need. They've already applied and received some fundings already from the city. I don't know if it was grant funding, I don't know if it was ARPA money, I can't, I, I, I don't want to be say in detail tonight because I want to continue to speak to the company. Would that company, that business, that minority business, be able to apply if they've already received some initial, some addition, some funding initially from the city of Fayetteville?
In this case, if they were growing.
And they're in, and they're in your scope here.
If they're growing, there is nothing in here that would preclude them from applying. But that said, this really is an accelerator fund. It is designed to take a business that is operating and doing well to grow them to be able to do a whole lot more. It may, this is not the perfect tool for all of our small businesses. So, I don't want to say, I, I will say that this will help some companies create new jobs and expand, but it also might be we need to look at other programs and other resources. If a business is in need and they're not able to grow, they won't be able to meet the terms of this. But we absolutely want to do something to help them.
Okay.
Not, that's, you know, but every project, every tool in our toolbox has a specific function. This is about growing them larger with employment.
Okay, good, and you said something that kind of made you say, err, err, inside because this particular small business is not doing well. And they have had to do some changes in the, the business, the way they were operating their business. And you're saying, and I'm going to find out a little bit more when we can have sidebar if this thing passes tonight, which is very good, with you and our city manager, uh, to see if they can fit or what we can do. But presently, you're saying if they're not doing well, and I'm not one hundred percent sure what well would mean, uh, equated to this particular business, but if they're not doing well, according to what well means to you, they may not be able to apply.
For this particular, they can absolutely apply, but what I would say is the last thing we ever want to do is work with the company and set them up for failure. You know, that we provide them these funds, then we have to talk about a clawback. If we can help them grow, and this, this fund might be perfect for them. If it's not, we'd love to talk to them and find a way to help them through the, through the entire team you've got both here and in the nonprofit community. This won't be perfect for everyone, but this will be an incredible catalyst to grow qualifying companies.
Well, I do like this, I, I see myself being able to support it tonight. I think it's a big thumbs up for supporting, uh, existing businesses and new businesses, but we will have a sidebar conversation about the, the particular details that I'm speaking of tonight.
Absolutely, look forward to trying to help them.
Thank, thank you, Councilman here. And so, Robo, just to, just to kind of recap where we are. So, there, there were funds, because earlier when we heard, heard your presentation, and you and I were on a panel earlier today with, at FTCC about businesses. There were rescue funds given for companies that were challenged during COVID. You know, and the city stepped up and, and did some emergency money for people who were too small for the, the big PPP program. After that, after the recovery portion, this was to help existing businesses. If I have location number one, and we are ready to get location number two, but I just don't have the capital or accessible capital at a good price, this may help me. This may help me go from location one to location two. If I hire people, if I'm in one of these concentrated census tracts, and if I plan to meet the rules, is that right?
Yeah, well, yes, this is recognizing that in our low to moderate income census tracts for minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, historically, and especially during COVID, there were negative impact by ability and capital. This helps them grow from five to fifteen.
Right, or you, you, there are some, some great success stories. Uh, the, the city and PWC did a, a Women in Business Review Week, right? And there was some testimonies of a young lady that came and got a, a contract or, or got on the list with the city and PWC, and has a couple of dump trucks, and then she bought two more trucks. Someone like that who was going to add equipment or add.
That is a perfect example, that this is how she gets that next fleet and that next operational cycle.
And so, and so, council, I'll briefly say this, and I know we've got a couple of other questions. As we look at these businesses, just like life cycles, right, that there are people at different stages and phases. We've got a lot to be proud of because, one, we were intentional about offering work to local companies. Two, we provided them a process, a collaborative process up through the hub with the county and PWC. And now, we're talking about connecting them to capital. So, that's a full-phase approach that we've had. And so, now, you may have companies at different phases at different times that this program may not fit, but I think this is something that's needed to help continue to encourage people to do better.
But you are building an ecosystem for local success stories.
All right, all right. All right, Councilmember Honduras, Benavente, and Davis, and, and Mayor Protem.
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
All right, I'll come back to you, Councilmember Benavente.
I, I think Mayor Colvin, uh, started to touch on my question. How is this relating back to what the hub does?
The hub is not all, but most would likely be the place where those companies get started. We have, and, and as they get wound up, once they're operating and they have a customer base, this is what takes them from a sole proprietorship or having one or two employees to growing into five to ten. Because what we have found is, uh, if you're able to make payroll and you're able to keep that rolling, it's very hard to find a way in interest-bearing debt to add substantially to your capacity, be it employees, equipment, and operations. So, you always end up small, and you're held small by that risk of debt and the interest that comes with it while you're waiting to get paid by customers, or, or should a customer go bad. Here, this gives you time to get the capital, uh, to have the equipment and the supplies you need to grow larger than that. So, the, the hub is where those businesses start, this is where we accelerate them.
Okay, so, and then obviously, that's one pathway, right? And then, when we, once we give you guys the green light, you start kind of on the, um, rolling this out a little bit more strong, uh, more strongly come the new year. I'm sure there's going to be other means and methods of, um, bringing people to understand what this is. Are you, are you talking about going like, I'm out, career fairs at the universities? I'm just trying to understand what are some other ways?
I think we'll be doing a lot of press and media and reaching directly out to companies that are already here. Uh, this will be an incredibly powerful conversation because we're going to get a lot of people that this doesn't fit, but it's going to give us an excellent chance to refer them to where they should be. Because we have these wonderful relationships up and down that life cycle of a company. Uh, we can get them help, it just might not be this program for some, for others, they're going to be a perfect fit.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Robo, I just have an additional question. The times I've been down to the hub, that place has been packed with small businesses. Is this two-point-five from the state one-time funding, or can we go back and get more? And how far will this five mil go?
Well, I, I believe that we are likely to go between ten and fifteen companies on this initial funding round, uh, if they're of this size, and that would create fifty, seventy-five, a hundred jobs or more. Uh, this is a demonstration project, we're going to show that this works, that we absolutely can go back and look for other sources. There have been both public and private entities that have expressed an interest in potentially joining in. We believe that this actually, this is truly, I, I don't want, this is us answering a question that has been asked in communities all over America. So, this is a creative solution, an aggressive way to do it. I think that once we're able to demonstrate success, we're going to be able to secure additional funding.
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh, Mayor Protem.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just kind of want to piggyback off of what the mayor said, and as a small business owner, I think as you start growing your business, and here in Fayetteville, we not only have the hub, we do have seed, we do have FTCC. So, we have, we have set the groundwork on, on businesses that are starting up, that are struggling, that, you know, to get them to that next level. And for the audience to just kind of put it, is if you are in a business and let's say you've been in for five years, and we all know that it's hard to find people to work now, it's, our insurance is three times more than it was four years ago. Rents are going up, taxes are going up, but if you could buy this one piece of equipment to get this contract, you could go from a fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year job to a, you know, five-hundred-thousand-dollar-a-year job that is bringing people to stay in our region. And, and I think you've said it perfectly, this is not going to fit everybody. And anybody that is an entrepreneur that owns a small business, whether it's just you or it's with fifty people, you have to have the nerves to be able to do it. And I think that this is going to help people in our local community. When we go out and put RFPs, we are giving them the opportunity because it's so hard to get money, to even borrow money now for a small business. So, and I think it's for the audience here, it's going into places that need help, that, that, that we can get the funding for. So, kudos to you for keep on, and kudos to the council for moving this through. But for the businesses that are struggling at the time, or just starting out, we have other avenues. And what I do like about this, people are going to come to you, but then we'll have the data to be able to push them out to where they need to go to be successful. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate all the support of staff, make this possible.
Uh, Councilmember McNair, did somebody press?
Um, yes, I have. Yeah.
Oh, you pressed it, okay. All right, I was wondering how you pressed your button over the phone, but I got you. Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
I have a question for, for, for Robo. How does this, um, correlate with, uh, NC Works, um, the program, um, um, that, that you just presented?
NC Works would be providing employees and training. Uh, they'd be an example of, in this case, using Mayor Protem's example. Uh, Company X purchases a piece of equipment to help them grow their business and add employees. NC Works and the Community College would be able to train employees on that equipment or in advance of it actually even being delivered, so they could recruit people to work it, uh, and fulfill those jobs.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. I'll go to Councilmember Honduras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the, uh, Can Do Program, Grant Program.
All right, motion by Councilmember Honduras, second by Councilmember Davis. Discussion on that. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Uh, Councilmember McNair.
That is green, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, unanimous. Good job, Robo. Go get them, get some money on the street, please, sir. All right, council, good job, motion to adjourn. All right, y'all have a good evening.